I will now call to order the June 24, 2021 Business Meeting. Gary Schmidt, County Administrator, would you please call the role?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today: Amanda Keller, Acting County Counsel, Clerk to the Board, Shannon Bays, and Christina Twiliger. Role call: Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schull.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. I will now lead in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us on the Zoom app for this meeting and you're interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. Today, we anticipate another long business meeting, hopefully not as long as last week's, because we are finishing up the last seven public hearings on a variety of topics that must be completed before the end of the fiscal year, June 30. Just like last week, the public is welcome to sign up to testify. We are asking that you specify which item you wish to speak on when registering. Registration will close at five minutes past 10:00. Public comment on individual public hearings will be taken throughout the meeting, and the general public testimony will be taken at the end. You are welcome to stay for the entire proceeding, or you can leave and come back later to be heard; that will be allowed. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. We hope not to need a break, but we'll decide depending on how long the proceeding is going. With that in mind, I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Orders will be enforced in this business meeting. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith, thank you. First, this is in addition to your agenda. We're going to have an update on the county's cooling shelter work due to the quite high heat that's expected for our area starting tomorrow. Online is Brenda Durbin. She's the Social Services Division Director. She will give you a quick update in the public on how the county is going to support cooling shelters starting this weekend. Brenda, please go ahead.
Good morning, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to share this update. So earlier this week, an urgent call was made to community and municipal partners. As of this morning, the following sites are confirmed for at least part of the weekend heat emergency: the Prince of Life Lutheran Church in Oregon City, Sandy Library, Hoodland Library, the Westland Adult Community Center, Estacada Community Watch. The Clackamas Service Center is going to be open for outdoor food and water, the Zoar Lutheran Church in Canby, the City of Sandy Community Services, Oregon City Pool Community Room, and the Father's Heart Street Ministry. We did ask for interested entities to respond to us by 11:00 a.m. today. So as we get additional opening cooling centers, we will update the county website, and we can also send the board an update at the end of the day today. Social Services is able to provide small grants to entities that meet some established criteria. A flat rate of $1,000 a day is being offered. This equates to about $125 per operating hour, which should cover staff costs, additional utilities, water, and so forth. Additionally, Gary Schmidt has authorized pay for county staff who are able to volunteer at cooling centers over the weekend, and H3A staff have been notified of this opportunity. Disaster management has reached out to the Red Cross for assistance in staffing cooling centers, and we expect to hear back from them by 3:00 p.m. today. As I mentioned, the county's website will be updated today and regularly throughout the weekend. The Public Information Center line will also be staffed all weekend to provide information to people who cannot access this information on the website, and 2-1-1 will also be notified of the Clackamas County Cooling Center information. We understand that there may be other local efforts that either do not meet the county requirements for county website listing, or who are otherwise sort of not interested in formally working with the county, so we rely on those independent local efforts to communicate their services through their own channels. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Brenda, for making that well-known, that cooling centers will be available during this expected increase in heat. Do we have any questions or comments to the presenter? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chair Smith. I'm curious about, I understand we'll put this out on our communication channels through social media and probably our normal web and news outlets, but what about for vulnerable populations that may not have access to Internet, that may be in rural areas, that may not have air conditioning? I'm thinking of people who may be older, people with disabilities. What efforts are made to reach those hard-to-reach populations?
That's a great question. I don't have an immediate answer for you. I do know that for people who are working with social services, our clients, we can reach out to them. I can also reach out to our colleagues at DHS to make sure that all of their staff are familiar with the ways to understand the resources that are available in each community.
Okay, and what about the possibility of fire and power outages with the increased heat?
Yeah, I'm going to say that's probably a good question for Daniel Nibauer in disaster management. I'm not able to respond to that.
Yeah, and I'm happy to respond. We have duty officer that's on all the time, and the duty officer is aware. We've made plans with CCOM and other partner agencies on how we're going to escalate this weekend if we need to. We're ready on alerts and talk to our partner agencies. So we've got procedures in place, and it's actually what I've been doing most of this morning, up until now, for both power outages and wildfires.
I know, it's like, here we go again. Chair Smith, I have a question that's a little, it's related to the heat, but not necessarily cooling centers. Is now the right time to ask that?
It depends on what it is. Go ahead.
Okay, so I've received a constituent concern regarding sporting events that are continuing to happen over the weekend, wondering what the rules are, why are they continuing when it's so hot and children can be put at risk? And I'm just wondering what, what are the regulations and what is the role of any of us? If it's local jurisdictions or the state, or how do you deal with situations like this when it comes to public health and heat?
Sure. Brenda, I can start answering that if you like, if you're still on there. So there's no local regulations or rules that we're aware of that would govern that or say that a sporting event can or can't happen. PGA will be putting messaging out today on how to stay cool and how to stay safe. Cities are communicating that as well. Most of the hosting organizations and/or support participation organizations have, if not all, have different policies on what to do and how to stay safe and cool, and whether they're going to cancel events or not. I would encourage anyone to contact that hosting organization and ask what they have in terms of that place in general, you know, taking more breaks, water, be in the shade if possible, look for signs of heat exhaustion, and be aware of what they are, our safety measures to do that. But I would, from what we understand, most hosting organizations are going to have policies around that and will change the way that the games operate to make sure that everyone stays safe.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, just quickly, I was watching, just caught a glimpse of the news last evening, and one of the news channels did a piece on the three cooling centers in the Loma County. So I was just wondering if we could, if PGA can make sure we push that out to the news agencies. And I know that people that watch the news and everything and get that word out know where, and are connected to sometimes these faith-based communities and others that are know where the, some of our homeless individuals get nourishment, and so that that message can help, you know, bleed through the community, so to speak, and get out there. But that would be one way to address Commissioner Fisher's point about how we get the message out to those individuals who don't have all those communication tools.
I'm sure PGE has heard that, Paul, and they're probably doing that as we speak. Thank you, that's a good idea. Commissioner Fisher, is that you?
Yeah, just my last question. Are we doing any, I had heard that we were doing some coordination with the Education Service District, and schools maybe utilize these cooling centers. Do we have any more word about that?
We don't have any confirmation from any school buildings yet, but we are actively working on that through this morning and hopes to get a couple of school-based locations finalized by the end of the day today.
Okay, thank you.
And I would be curious, next week, Brenda, if you could give us a report on how many people attended these cooling shelters. I think that's an important stat that we track. I mean, is it a waste of effort? I would hope if they were in need, they would go, but we're spending a lot of time and effort in doing this. I hope people react favorably. Thank you very much for that. Gary, what's up next?
All right, great, thank you, Brenda. Next is COVID-19 updates. We have Philip Mason Joyner, Public Health Director, and Daniel Nibauer, interim Disaster Management Director, to present. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. And Shannon, if you could please put up the slides like usual, Daniel will get us started.
Certainly. Go to the next slide and look at our case and death data. Since the 14th, the last briefing, we've had 180 additional cases and one death, and for Multnomah and Washington County, 255 cases and 162 cases respectively, and they both had two deaths. Next slide. Looking at it on a chart on a by-week basis, we see that we thankfully are still going, continuing to go down, and that's very good news to all of us. Go to the next slide, and shows the statewide COVID-19 patients, and it's still trending downward a little bit, but kind of evening out. Concern here, while there still is lots of hospital capacity, is that we do see an uptick in the summer in general, and I'm sure we will, particularly because of the heat. So there's kind of an artificialness here, knowing that there'll be a lot more folks in the hospitals, so the hospitals will still see a general decrease of capacity because of the other cases that are coming in, of other things besides COVID. Next slide. Kind of metrics, we are still at risk. Very thankful to see our cases per 100,000 under 90, and a test positivity that is under 5%, much lower than it was even just a month ago. And next slide.
In terms of the vaccination efforts, so very proud of our work that continues in the community. Over 236,000 people in Clackamas County have been vaccinated to date out of our total population of a little over 420,000. As folks know, I'm sure we did a few weeks ago meet the 65% of those eligible 16 and older getting vaccinated, which moved us into low-risk. The state is, the goal right now is around 70%, getting to 18 and older. As of this morning, the state still has 38,000 people to go. The percentage is 68.9%. Commissioner Fisher, last week you asked for, well, where is Clackamas County at in reaching that metric towards 77%? And how many people does Clackamas County have to go if we want to compare? We would have about 12,000, a little over 12,000 to reach that metric.
Okay, 12,188.
Yes.
See it there, thank you so much.
And then the governor's executive orders do come to an end on June 28. I don't have information at this point in terms of what that exactly will mean for the state of Oregon, because looking at 38,000 people to go to meet the 70% metric, it's highly unlikely that by the 28th, the state will meet that metric. They're saying sometime in July, sometime in July, but things have slowed down significantly, even here in Clackamas County. Next slide, please. We still have our weekly regular clinics at the Clackamas County Public Health, which partners are hosting across the county. Those will continue throughout the entire summer. We also have just some additional clinics here on campus at our health centers, at the Beaver Creek Clinic, that we have next week coming up. And the demand and the interest from parents and students at the Lake Oswego Westland-Wilsonville School District, I think this is our third or fourth clinic that we're providing at their school locations, so have that going on as well on the 30th. Next slide, please. But I want to encourage folks that if you haven't been vaccinated, perhaps you're having conversations with family and friends, you know, you want to learn more information, I really want to encourage folks to continue to talk to folks you trust, your healthcare provider, about the vaccine. If you have any barriers, if these schedules don't work for you, you know, I would encourage you, pretty much every pharmacy in the county also has vaccine available in the evenings, on weekends. The mass vaccination clinics now are closed, so these local clinics, the pharmacies, and then what we call pop-up events. So if you are connected to a group, if you're an employer and you want to get someone at your work site vaccinated, really want to encourage you to either call our call center at 503-655-8224. They're available to help respond to the heat this weekend and also help with vaccinations. And you can also email us at covidvaccine@clackamas.us. We have mobile teams, they will go anywhere in the county to get folks vaccinated, and we have, that's become pretty popular, to get some folks easier access to the vaccine. So with that, that is our report for this week. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Do we have any questions for either two of the presenters today from our board? Well, thank you very much for the informative information. Gary, what's up next?
Thank you. Next, Chair, is a public hearing for the Housing Authority of Clackamas County to discuss the Housing Authority of Clackamas County's budget. Chair, if you would please announce, the board is switching hats.
I will now announce the board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority of Clackamas County Board for the next item. Shannon, can you please bring in Commissioner Lindstra?
She is now on.
She is now on. Hello, Commissioner Lindstra.
Good morning.
And welcome.
All right, so this is Resolution Number 1955 approving the Housing Authority of Clackamas County Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Budget for the period of July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022. The budget is for an amount of $74,744,77. Rod Cook, the interim Director of Health, Housing, and Human Services, is here in person, and Jill Smith, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, is online to give a brief presentation and then answer your questions. Go ahead, Rod.
Good morning, Chair and Board. My name is Rod Cook. I am with the Health, Housing, and Human Services Department. Staff is seeking board approval of Resolution Number 1955 approving the Housing Authority of Clackamas County's 2021-22 operating budget as presented to the Budget Committee on May 24, 2021, with one requested amendment for the supportive housing services program. This line item was adjusted from $24.5 million to $10 million. Once approved, the Housing Authority budget will be presented to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. In preparation for the public hearing scheduled this morning, we have a short synopsis of the Housing Authority budget, if I may.
Yes, please.
The Housing Authority is a municipal corporation established under ORS 456. The agency provides and develops affordable housing for low-income neighbors in Clackamas County through the administration of HUD funding programs, including public and additional affordable housing totaling 1,100 units, administering the HUD-funded Housing Choice Voucher Program for over 2,000 rent assistant vouchers, administration of the Metro Affordable Housing Development Bond Program, and the administration of the locally funded rent assistance and service contracts through the Supportive Housing Services Program. The majority of people served through these programs are extremely low-income, disabled, and elderly. Many were previously homeless. The revenue summary real quickly, the total budget as the Commissioner, I mean, as the Administrator Schmidt mentioned, is $74,705,477, and that includes federal, metro, and local funds. Funds from the metro bond and the metro supportive housing measure account for $44,233,000 of the budgeted revenue. $10 million placeholder amount is there for the supportive housing services. There's a task force, as some of you are on that task force, we're working closely with the board on that to come to a number that we'll be presenting later in the week. And that is our...
Does Jill Smith want to make any comments? Commissioners will now have some clarifying comments to make. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, thank you, Rod, for the presentation. And you touched on it, but I just want to make it clear, because even as late as yesterday, learning of a lot of concern from some of the providers and whatnot that perhaps we're not meeting or cutting, and I think we made it very clear in our efforts, both in our statement here a couple weeks ago and in our plan that we'll be discussing in more detail on Tuesday, that we're not cutting and we're building a bridge to ramp those services up as revenues come in. So is that, not trying to put words in your mouth, but is that relatively accurate?
Yes, and Jill, can we bring Director, Executive Director Jill Smith in to the room? She's suffering from a cold, so we'll see if her voice can...
Maybe her internet connection's suffering from a cold.
Do colds still exist?
Okay. Well, now that we're taking the mask off, I think we're finding them again. Is she not there? Okay.
I'm here.
Okay. So Jill, did you hear the question?
Yes, and I completely agree with Commissioner Savis's, the way that he phrased that, that this $10 million budget placeholder is acting as a bridge, with every intention and hope that we're able to roll out our full program, as stated in our local implementation plan, in hopes that we see full funding flow in through this tax measure.
Yeah. Thank you, Jill. I appreciate that. The last thing I wanted to say was, you know, since the budget discussion around this in May, I've taken a pretty good deep dive on the finances. We were expecting about, initially about $24 million on July 1 of 2021, literally just a few days from now, and due to some miscalculation, I guess, I'll put it as nice as I can on the metro side, that's not going to happen for quite a period of time before we get that much money incoming. And the projection we have for July 1, once we get our agreement signed, is actually $150,000. So $150,000 is a long way from $24-plus million, but I think we got a plan that we will present on Tuesday that'll get us just what we just discussed and bridge. And I do appreciate metro staff and all the financial people from both metro and Washington County and Loma County, Clackamas County, working together to get some better projections. And I just want to say that the email that I sent to metro staff on June 4 and their response on June 7, I really tried to get, give me your firm number that you think will get, or give me, not firm number, actually, totally wrong on that. I said, give me your lowest number, you think, on a monthly basis for the next 12 months, and give me your highest number, worst best-case scenario, not going to hold you to any of that. And really, what they really did is they really didn't come back with that answer. They weren't able to answer the question, but pointed us back to the Portland Energy Fund tax income on a percentage basis of what that rollout will look like. So we've done a lot of math and some rollouts and so forth, we'll go into greater detail on Tuesday, but I'm confident that we can step this up as those revenues come in. So I expect, and I'm looking at Elizabeth, that we'll be making budget adjustments during the year to recognize those dollars, and probably more frequent than normal because of that, which is all a good thing, we'll be recognizing new revenue. So I'm optimistic, and I hope everyone realizes that it's not as bad, but it's not as good as it could be. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. Commissioner Schrader?
Well, I just want to give a shout-out to staff, and that is Elizabeth Comfort, and Rod, and Jill, and Gary, because basically what we did was pull together a team similar to what we did when we founded the Veterans Village, interdisciplinary, with all these minds at the table, with a couple of goals in mind, and that is not to cut pieces that are already there. We did realize evidently that could have left a hole, so that's kind of a primary piece, I think, Paul, that we, if I'm saying this correctly, that we're doing, and then taking a look at the highest revenue stream, lowest revenue stream, and how we can roll out the complete services as we move forward. And we'll be doing everything from at least quarterly checkups, if not more, to get a sense of where the revenue is, so how we can ramp this up. I would really ask the advocacy groups, there's been a lot of consternation out there. I don't know where the misinformation is coming from. We have been working on it, and I would ask them to be patient, and of course, I always have an open door, so does Commissioner Savis, but I will say, you know, chatter doesn't help, and, you know, kind of getting, you know, we have to remain stable and calm as we work this through to ramp it up, and we are going to ramp it up. And Tuesday, we will present in more detail with our financial folks and with our housing folks, how, a plan on how we can do this. So thanks, Gary, for pulling the team together. It's a real useful, it's like a special ops team where we kind of just went in surgically and just kind of did the financial work for this. And thank Commissioner Savis, who has really delved into the numbers, so. So that's it. And again, any questions, you can contact either myself or Commissioner Savis, but I can't help people understand what's going on if I don't know what their fears and concerns are, and I guess that's about it. And in some ways, I feel kind of disappointed and hurt to even think that after all the years that we have spent on this county and all the work we've done, that it would even be a question.
Right.
That we wouldn't follow through on a regional, as regional, you know, collaborators on this, and it doesn't help. If you have a question, then please come to the folks who can really give you the answers, okay? And don't listen to every piece of misinformation that's out there, okay?
Thank you, Commissioners. I have a question for either Rod or Jill Smith online. How much money from this tax has been collected to be allocated to Clackamas County right now?
From what I understand, and actually Elizabeth Comfort has shared this with us, it's $150,000, unless she has updated information.
Elizabeth Comfort is agreeing with you. So we have $150,000 that will be available to us. It was projected that we'd receive tens of millions of dollars, and that didn't happen. Clackamas County is not in a position to spend money we don't have. We are not in a position to borrow on the free market. We are not in a position to borrow against our reserves or contingency, because as I believe and our staff believes, that is very poor budgeting practices, and we will do everything we can to protect our AAA bond rating. It's also very disingenuous to the It's also very disingenuous to the Clackamas County taxpaying citizens for us to go into debt knowing that we have no possible way of paying that because we have made allocations in our budget for, frankly, other items. I do not believe that our housing folks will be put in the street. And you're going to see that on Tuesday. And I do believe that is some disinformation, and I understand how that happens because it plays to our greatest fears. Oh, no, the money isn't here. What's going to happen? So as, as this hearing proceeds, we'll be able to answer any questions that come up on that. And I just want to make clear, we have received a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a promise of either twenty-four million or thirty-two million. Frankly, I can't keep track. It just isn't here yet. I see another Commissioner in the queue. Is that Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah. So I just want to encourage, if, you know, folks are listening, I've received at least one specific inquiry that I've passed on to Gary Schmidt, passed on to Rod Cook and team to get answers for. But I agree with you, Commissioner Schrader, we need specifics as to what's happening, how this will affect people and programs, and basically people, people that rely on the services. And I think that's, that's very, very important. The statement that was issued two weeks ago was, I think, a very clear statement that we are committed to the local implementation plan. We're exploring all, exploring bridge financing to make sure that we're able to maintain current services and begin implementation of the local implementation plan. And of course, that takes a ramp up. It just doesn't happen overnight. Even if we had twenty-four million right this very second, we wouldn't be able to functionally or realistically execute because it's a new, it's expanding on a whole additional service delivery system. So I'll look forward to what the, what the interdepartmental team has come up with and to have that discussion. I do want to say that the concerns before us are not just making sure that the people that are sheltered right now through our services remain sheltered, but also all the people that are unsheltered, that this metro services housing measure is, is meant to address. And we all know that that's a very important priority for Clackamas County.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, and thank you for that, Commissioner Fisher, because first things first, again, we want to maintain, and then we do want to expand as regional collaborators in this larger effort. I, I did want to make a comment, Chair, about contingencies, reserves, things of that sort. One of the reasons we have to be very careful with that is because of the expectation of a very, of bad fire season. Okay? That's a very real threat that we have. Maybe if we weren't dealing with the climate issues and all the other issues with, with what I consider is going to be probably a pretty rough summer with wildfires, you know, we, maybe we would have more flexibility. But I'm going to put it out there to our residents of this county that, right now, that has to be one of the priorities that we consider because we, we had nearly two of our rural communities, well, well, they were extremely impacted and came pretty close to like their communities, that's Malala Estacada. And of course, even our urban areas, because of the pollution and the smoke, we're suffering the ability to get people evacuated. We're living in a time now where that's the way, I think, we're going to have to prepare. So I do want to say, you know, people say, well, well, that's what it's there for, yeah. But remember, everyone, we're also trying to balance between multiple emergencies that we are highly likely going to be facing this year. So just a comment.
Yeah, that's a very good point. The other two counties don't have the forest fire situations that we do here in Clackamas. Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, just to make sure people out there who are listening aren't overly concerned, like we mentioned earlier, we have moved ten million dollars into the Supportive Housing to cover our needs through the end of December. And as we get towards the end of the year, this is, I'm sure this is going to wash out. More money's going to be available. So people out there who are receiving assistance in housing, do not be overly concerned at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments from Commissioners? I will now open the public testimony portion of this hearing. I believe I have one card on the testimony for this hearing. Is that correct? Les Poole, please come forward, state your name, residence, and you have three minutes. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to testify on this particular public hearing? In the room. Les, you're up.
Thank you. Good morning, Les Poole. I live in Gladstone. I'm a planning commissioner there, and I rarely talk about my background or resume, but land use, planning, transportation, material handling, logistics, I'm your guy for that. If you need a software engineer, I'm not your guy. So the reason I'm speaking today for the first time on a housing authority budget or issue is that it's, obviously, it's becoming an increasingly important and expensive and difficult to manage situation. And the county's caught in a really awkward place. And of course, that place was created by Metro. In many ways, what's going on is we're seeing the effects of Metro or Salem or outside, and I, I got to be careful how I say this, we're seeing a lot of control and a lot of uncertainty elsewhere that we're trying to rely on here, and we can't. And yet here we're coming up on July, we have a budget, and, and in sitting here, I'm not sure how much the amount is. So not, there, there was a discussion that money was removed or, and I understand, I'm not, I'm not trying to criticize that. I, I think the housing authority folks, Mr. Cook and others, are doing a fine job. But, but I'm a little distressed as to where are we? And I think that's reflecting in, in your comments. And we're all paying for this. We're all, I mean, all of us. It, it doesn't matter who you are, we're all paying for this. And I, I'll give a very quick example of something that I think would really conclude my testimony and deliver the message. Whatever this budget turns into and whatever happens, I think we, the public, want to know what we're getting for our money. We want accountability for it. And again, I want to reiterate that the county didn't create this mess. There's only so much that you can do. You didn't create, you know, I mean, there is only so much you can do, and so I think we all share that frustration. Quickly, my example of concern. As a planning commissioner, the housing project, which it was known as the Webster Road Redevelopment, when that issue came before us, there was not enough certainty, there was a lot of grayness. And the only time in my history of over six years as a planning commissioner, I abstained on the issue. I didn't vote against it. I certainly wasn't convinced that it was ready for primetime, and I abstained. And of course, that very project has turned into a, a mess. So please, watch our money and...
We are. Thank you.
And, and I appreciate everything, again, we're trying to do with this issue.
Thank you, Les Poole.
Thank you.
You bet. Shannon, is there anybody online wanting to testify on this hearing?
Yes, I have four registered participants, and I can call on them in the order they were received.
Sure.
First up is Rose Fuller. Rose, please unmute, say your name and place of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Again, I'm Rose Fuller, Executive Director of Northwest Family Services. We're a multi-service, multicultural organization embedded in the heart of Clackamas County where I live and work. Northwest Family Services supports child well-being, families building, victims of crime. After, we served twenty-seven thousand people and distributed over a million dollars in rent and food relief, mostly in Clackamas County. We manage, since I'm testifying on the Housing Authority Budget, I just want to say we're, we manage organs only culturally specific baby shelter. We're part of a hub-funded project supporting youth homelessness and provide numerous other housing and rent relief efforts. I trust you, we're all aware that there are many CBOs that provide significant support throughout Clackamas County. All have dedicated staff and people that are relying on the continued support. And yes, we are worried. Sorry if we're bugging you, but we are worried. I'm representing some of the members of the Here Together Clackamas cohort. I want to express relief that the commission is moving forward with its commitment to implement the SHS starting July 1. We stand ready to do this work with you and share our concerns and questions as we all prepare for the upcoming fiscal year. Communication flow is very important to us. I think that's where you get whisperings when we don't know what's going on. A couple of questions regarding the LIP. The county staff created an incredibly strong LIP, which outlines transformative potential of this new revenue source. We understand that everybody is responding to evolving budget information or lack thereof, commissioners, county staff, stakeholders, and community members alike. And, and we're all happy here, we're all waiting for the plan on Tuesday. We commend you and the staff for the great work that went into drafting the LIP with strong community engagement. That plan reflects the needs in our community and aligns the goals and mandates of the measures. It's unclear, however, how the reduction will change LIP. We hope that as you act quickly in establishing long-term oversight, that it will also include a forum for community input in these decisions. Our ask is that providers, our ask is that we have clear information as we are supporting hundreds, if not thousands, of folks in shelters and housing with the expectation of July 1 funding, especially as the state rent moratorium ends June 30th. Again, we just want equal partnership in this, as this evolves, as community partners, as incredibly hot days are upon us, if not wildfires, we too are...
Thank you, Rose, for your testimony. And I, I listened carefully to your comments, and I would like some folks, somebody in the room, to address her concerns. Gary, are you able to address her concerns about not being able, for her organization, not being able to offer services? She claims that her organization may not be able to offer services. And I'm questioning whether this particular funding stream goes to this organization because I don't know. And so if somebody in the room could address Rose or somebody online, come up to the microphone.
Yeah, so I'll ask Rod or Jill to help. I, I will, I will start. This is, I hope this has been made clear to at least the organizations that, I know we did an RFP process for the implementation of the Supportive Housing Services Program, our local implementation plan, when July 1 starts, and it was always said contingent on funding. That was very, very clear. So I just want to, in partnership with the nonprofits, I would like to know, because honestly, I don't, but H3S staff, correct me if, if you know, if people have been spending money that hasn't arrived yet, that's a problem. I, I doubt that's the case, but I'm sure nonprofits have made plans, but it was always contingent on funding, and we do not have the funding in place. So Rod, can you add, or Jill add to anything, please?
Jill, do you want to speak to this, or you want me to do it? Are you still there? I don't know.
I'm still here. Go ahead, you can start, I'm happy to add on.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say that some, if not most, of the people applying for the new SHS funding, and that's a new, July 1, so that's new programming. It might have been expansive programming, it might have been expanding something that was happening, but it's new. And so I'm going to keep saying that because anybody that had a relationship with us up to this date, there's other funding. That's the other core funding that we've, the task group has worked really hard to make sure that we can continue that funding, those programs, those existing programs, keep that current, keep people in housing. So there's, it, it becomes a complex issue when you have this conversation because there's old money or existing money, and then there's the new. So if the new doesn't arrive, that's what's causing the anxiety, that this new money hasn't, isn't going to arrive like we all thought, July 1. And yes, that will create some disruption of new service, or if people were depending on that new money to provide some of the old service, it would disrupt some of the old service. So that's why this is complex. And all I could say is that, that's the reality. And this is a typical time in our funding cycle. June 30 would be the end of contracts without this Supportive Housing Measure. We would be at this point, at this part of the year, waiting for the legislature to see if there's funding in certain state funding. So in the nonprofit world, in our world, where we're getting money and we're passing it on to the community, this is a normal, a normal, in my opinion, a normal phenomenon that happens this time of year, every end of the biennium. And so it, this is, this is not necessarily new. The only thing new about this is we have additional monies that we all thought would be here that we could move forward on, but it's, it's not arriving. So, and I, and I'll say to people who haven't been in the back rooms with the task force, I've been in this county over twenty-five years, the commitment I'm seeing from the Commissioners on this issue and the, and the county administration on this issue is far greater than any, than I could, than I've seen in any other issue. So, so people are really serious about trying to help this issue move forward. And I just wish we, I would have been better at communicating that to the community, to Here Together, to the nonprofits. But we're here to say it today. That's my perspective on where we're at with this issue.
I think you explained that really well, Rod. Jill, do you have anything to add?
No, I think Rod explained it very well. Thank you, Rod.
Okay. Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. Thank you, Rod, for that. I absolutely support your comment about that this commission's shown a lot of commitment towards getting through and solving the complexity of this, of this problem. Always, within funding streams, there are fits and starts and delays in the legislature, and we sort of do the best we can to plan and adjust the budget as the fiscal year goes along. But at least in one situation, I know that we have, we have about eight million dollars that is our money that was identified in the local implementation plan that would go to homeless services currently. And some of those dollars have been discontinued for certain providers for this next fiscal year. And so they don't know, expecting that the Supportive Housing Services dollars would fill that gap within the metro boundary, and they don't know how they're going to function or what they're supposed to do come July 1. So those specific providers, I'm not sure if Northwest Family Services is one, I know Northwest Alternatives, Housing Alternatives is one. We just have to do some really good work in helping them figure out how they're going to plan and bridge for those dollars.
Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, Commissioner Fisher, I have a question because this is information that you evidently had, but I have not heard it before.
Yeah, I shared it with Gary and with Rod.
I'll let her talk.
And I'm just essentially trying to understand where the communication gaps are and where, who's, what the information funnel has been with this. I think we're kind of all aware of it, but why are, why, why are there the chatter conversations going on without, you know, the whole commission kind of being aware of what this is? I would be more than willing to speak to people about this issue, but it's been kind of like crickets out there. And I can't help unless I, I hear from people. So I would strongly suggest to all our nonprofits, who I've, I've said this before, continually supported over the years, if you have specific concerns, if you could email me with a list, that's great. We are doing everything we can to rectify the situation. And I hate to remind people, this is, this is really a tough thing to tell folks. Sixty-three precincts voted against the measure in our county, and eighteen voted fifty percent or more. So I also want to remind our partners out there, you need to do more outreach to the communities because evidently, we know what you do and how important you are. But when I look at the kind of numbers that happened with this... But when I look at the kind of numbers that happened with this particular measure, people seem totally unaware of what the implications were. So I'm going to put a little more pushback and say, folks, you need to get out there to the local communities because it was, this was a huge, it was huge. I was shocked when I looked into it. I was surprised, you know, I thought, you know, and I thought, well, why did it happen like that? I think that people were stressed over COVID. I think that the measure came by very quickly. And I want to remind folks, we are in the position of implementing, as, as regional collaborators and supporters of our nonprofits, something that a lot of our residents, you know, were, were not there with us. So there's an extreme communication gap there with our residents as well. And we can't do it alone, we're five people. So I'm going to put a call out to the nonprofits that, to take a look at this information and look at the precinct breakdowns, and please see as well with us where you need to do your groundwork to really tell people this is an important, critical issue. And, and you know, as I said, we're taking a risk, as, as I see it, as commissioners, because we're going to implement it, we're going to go there, because it's the right thing to do. Okay? We know it's the right thing to do. There's no way we're not going to move forward with it. But we need your help, and, you know, not, a pathway of communication goes two ways. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, so anyway, sorry about that.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. I think there's confusion on what pot of money that some of these nonprofits get services from. During our regular budget cycle, we received less funds, normal, regular nonprofit funding, we received less money from the federal government, and we received less funding from the state of Oregon. Some of those nonprofits received across-the-board reductions in that. And it has nothing to do with the metro-supported housing services. And I think people are thinking that the metro-supported housing services was going to backfill funding from another pot. You know, we can't mix pots of money, it is illegal. We would get in big trouble. We can't take money off the orange tree and put it in the same bucket with the money off the apple tree. It does not work that way, and I really wish our nonprofits would go back to their budgets, let us know, and then communicate with us exactly what is happening. Paul Savas, you're up.
Yeah, so I think I have another way of framing this up, and I appreciate Rod's words with existing or current, and then the new. So in that context, I want to say that I believe the $8 million that Commissioner Fisher referred to is largely, if not substantially, federal and state funding. And if the advocates of 26-210, the Supportive Housing Services dollars, have anything to be alarmed about, I would say this. I would say they would be alarmed that if the federal and state funding is cut, and they're going to rely upon this money when it, when it comes in, then what will happen is the mission of 26-210 will not be accomplished because all the monies will be absorbed for, for current funding, and none of the new services in which 26-210 is designed to do. So it would, it would be a shame. And I would say, the advocates, including us, of providing these services, should get to our federal legislators and our state legislators and say, heck no, don't cut this funding. That's the audience, those are the folks that fund it, they should not be cutting it because, again, it will completely diminish our ability to implement the LIP.
Thank you.
It will severely compromise it.
Thank you very much for your commissioner's comments. Rod, thank you for your addition to that. And Jill. Shannon, who's up next?
August Wilson is up next. August, please unmute. You have three minutes. Oh, state your name and place, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, for giving me a chance to speak today. My name is August Wilson, and I live in Milwaukee, Oregon. I'm grateful for the opportunity to share my story with you today. I experienced a lot of difficulties throughout my childhood. During middle school, I joined a mentoring program for children of incarcerated parents at Northwest Family Services, which I remained involved until I graduated from high school. They helped me in so many ways to become who I am today. As a young adult, I age out of foster care and struggle to find stable and permanent housing. I was connected with a housing program at Northwest Family Services that helped me find stable and permanent housing of my own. I am really grateful for this program, and I am so inspired by this program that I knew I wanted to find a way to have a career that allowed me to help other youth experiencing similar situations. I'm really proud to say that I am now a youth peer support specialist employed at Northwest Family Services, where I get to help homeless youth find safe and stable housing. This funding was so important to bridge the gap between adolescents and adulthood. Unfortunately, my story is not unique. Stable fund, stable housing funding is so critical to support young people as well as many others. Thank you for your commitment to help the homeless community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Up next?
Next up is Melissa Earlbaum. Let me get her on. Melissa, going to have you unmute, state your name and place of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Melissa Earlbaum. I'm the Executive Director for Clackamas Women's Services and a resident of Oregon City. I have prepared remarks regarding the Housing Authority budget, which we fully support and are here to support, the work of the Housing Authority. I will send my comments in a letter that I was previously prepared to make, and instead respond to some of the Commissioner questions and comments. The nonprofit community has been advocating very strongly with our federal and state partners. As I understand it, we are not experiencing cuts in state and housing, or state and federal housing, to my knowledge. So if there are cuts in those areas, it would be helpful to understand them. And I think what the nonprofits are talking about is that $8 million that Commissioner Fisher mentioned, that $8 million is currently, yes, contracts end at the end of June and begin in July, but we also have housing and residents that have July 1 rent due. And so what the nonprofits are facing right now is, in some cases, county general fund cuts, and in other cases, freezes on those contracts, which is understandable, because of course, the county is trying to figure out, how do we reinvest that money in the urban, you know, as it relates to the Supportive Housing Services measure and the urban growth boundary? But because those decisions are on hold, and because the SHS funding has been so confusing the last couple of weeks, a month, many of the nonprofits are concerned about where and how they will move forward as of July 1. So that's what you're hearing. It's a complex issue, as Rod mentioned, it's all interconnected. I don't think any of the nonprofits are expending funds that they don't have currently, but because they don't understand the plan for that $8 million, or the decisions for the SHS haven't been made yet, understandably because of all the confusion with metro, there's just uncertainty moving forward. And July 1 is coming up quickly, and many of us are housing very vulnerable residents in the county. So that's what you're hearing, the concern. And to your point, Commissioner Schrader, I, I know that all of the nonprofits involved in these conversations have reached out to county staff and have been talking with county staff. And just because there's a lot of confusion going on all around, we don't know the answers to these questions yet. So we're really, really heartened and happy that there's a group of you all that have pulled together to work on this. We'd love to be a part of those conversations so we can understand more and plan on our end, so that people don't go without their rent July 1, or that we don't have to scale back on the shelter services that we've been providing because of the cuts, contract freezes, or uncertainty around the SHS funding. So I appreciate your time, and I will send my other comments in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Thanks, Melissa, I really appreciate, that's real, the clarity of what the real angst is out there. And as you know, we are doing everything we can to try and bring certainty in the middle of majorly uncertain times in a sustainable way. And we are committed to helping our nonprofits, but we're, you're going to have to work with us. And I do know that you lobby as well our federal and state folks, but I think, after what I've seen in terms of voting with, with the Children's Levy, as well as, as the Supportive Housing Services, I haven't looked at the precinct data for the Children's Levy, by the way, I don't want to get off task with that. But what I'm also asking your help with is to do broader appreciative inquiry, community outreach, that might be a discussion we have as a group. So our residents here will continue to support these kinds of activities, because I have seen that as a glaring, a glaring issue. And as I said, we are committed to absolutely doing the right thing, but we're going to need your help, and it has to be a broader swath of people who perhaps haven't really been involved in these conversations. So that's a conversation in the future to be had, I'd be glad to work with you on that. Certainly with, we've, we've managed to move ahead a number of community college initiatives based on that methodology, rather than just kind of very fast political campaigns that really take a number of people by surprise. So this is an opportunity now to start planting those seeds. So the next time there's an ask, we get 63 precincts voting yes, as opposed to no. And I'm really going to push to get the help, you, we need to, we need to fix this. So, thank you.
Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, just, just real quickly, and I think Rod said it well earlier about the complexity, and I think obviously some of the commenters here today have said they understand how complex it is, but I think we're mixing two things up here today, I want to separate them. Because I don't want other people to be more confused than they were when they, when this meeting started. So that is, that last Thursday, when we approved the H3S budget, that $8 million or so, or those fundings, actually far more than that, is all goes through H3S. That budget was last week. This is the HACC budget. Those eight, that $8 million did not come from the HACC. So I think people are looking for resources, again, to my other point, that really are from another department, through or from the federal or state agencies that, that make that all happen. So, again, if we tap these dollars, we're not going to be able to implement the, the LIP and the 26-210. So there are probably a few things that are fungible in there, that maybe they, there is a crossover, but for the most part, that was not in the budget, nor was it cut from the HACC budget, was not in the past HACC budgets, I understand it.
I think that is probably one of the most important points that could be made today, and I'm going to repeat it. The $8 million that some of these nonprofits, and it's been sprinkled out all over, because we have a lot of nonprofits in Clackamas County who deliver really important services. We are dependent upon those nonprofits. We want to see our nonprofits successful. However, that $8 million does not come from the Housing Authority of Clackamas County budget, the HAAC, that we are discussing today. That's a very important point. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Shannon, who's up next?
Susan Robertson is up next. Susan, please unmute your mic, state your name and place of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Susan Robertson, and I'm a resident of Lake Oswego in Clackamas County. And Chair Smith and Board of Commissioners, thank you for letting me speak to you today. Thank you, first of all, for committing to implement the Supportive Housing Services measure. Housing for people with severe mental illness is very precarious. There is a need for more housing, for different types of housing. And I also, we need your help in finding creative ways to fund and support our nonprofit organizations. And today, I'll speak a little bit about the support that my family has received from NAMI. In my case, I have personal experience with two family members with severe mental illness. I am the legal guardian for my older sister, Jennifer, who has schizophrenia. I just will relate one situation to illustrate the precarious housing situation. She was placed in a group home in Clackamas County. My sister is elderly, she's in her mid-60s. She's had a hip and knee replacement, suffers severe arthritis, and uses a walker. This group home had a gravel driveway, and the expectation was she would walk and push her walker to the end of the gravel driveway to smoke a cigarette. She couldn't make it that far, smoked a cigarette, and she was given a 48-hour eviction. And where did she end up? In the state hospital. This is not fair for my sister, this is not fair for taxpayer money, but this is the sort of thing that happens when there aren't enough options and a variety of options for people that we serve with serious mental illness. In the second case, I have a 28-year-old son, Bryce. He was born with an autistic spectrum disorder and has comorbid bipolar disorder. Late in 2019, he had a very serious suicide attempt, where he walked in front, he ran in front of a fully loaded logging truck. He did not intend to live from that accident. He lived. He has a traumatic brain injury, he's had discs replaced in his back, three compound fractures, his foot was ran over by the truck, and we're not sure if it needs to be amputated or not. He spent four months in a hospital, and he was living in Benton County, they could not find housing for him, and we were informed by the chief legal officer that they were going to take him after four months of hospitalization and probably a million dollars' worth of services to the homeless shelter in Benton County, because there were no options. We were able to place him in Curry County, which has very poor medical services, just because of the size. This past Monday, he just, we were able to get him in a group home in Clackamas County on Pearl Street in Oregon City, right on the 21st. This is not an acceptable placement for him. This group home on Pearl Street is at the top of a very tall hill, and they gave him a second floor.
Thank you very much, Susan. Thank you very much, Susan. I appreciate your testimony, your time is up. Your time is up, thank you. Shannon, can you please move on? Yeah, and our next caller?
That is the end of my list.
Pardon me?
That is the end of my list.
The end of the list. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate those calling in and in person to testify. I will now close the public hearing on this issue, and I will call for a motion.
I move we approve Resolution Number 1955, approving the fiscal year 2021-22 budget of $74,704,77 for the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. Second.
The motion has been made to approve the budget by Commissioner Shoal and seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further comment on this motion? Seeing none? Shannon, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Lindstra?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you, Commissioner Lindstra, for appearing today via Zoom, and, and your participation in this as well.
Thank you.
Yes, I believe I need a new script, my script is wrong. If somebody listening can get me a new one, because I'm out of order here. So Gary, what's up next?
Yes, if you would announce, the board is now adjourning as the Housing Authority and convening as the...
You're now adjourning on the Housing Authority, and Gary, what's up next?
Yes, you're convening as the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners for the next items, which are several public hearings. First of which is second reading of a county parks fine and county code changes. Your first reading was on June 10, 2021. Tom Riggs from Business and Community Services will present. Come on down, Tom.
Hello, Chair Smith, Commissioners, Administrator Schmidt, staff, thank you for the opportunity to come before you again. We had the first reading of the Parks Ordinance on June 10, as Administrator Schmidt said, and, and as he said, I'm Tom Riggs, Parks Manager for Business and Community Services. And so we are here to request a second reading. At the June 10 first reading, there were, there was one change made to the language in the code, and so that has been incorporated now, and there was a first reading by title only, and we are here for the second reading.
Do we have any questions or comments for the presenter on this? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Actually, this is a public hearing, if you would open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I will now open the public hearing. I think I'm having script difficulty.
Okay.
Beg your pardon. Okay, well, we're now entertaining public hearing. Thank you, Tom. Do we have anybody? No, I do not have any cards in person. Do we have anybody online?
We do not.
Thank you very much. I will now close the public hearing. I will now call for a motion. Thank you.
I move we approve the county parks fine and county code changes.
Second. The motion has been made by Commissioner Shoal and seconded by Commissioner Fisher. Do we have any further comment on this item? Seeing none. Shannon, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, and thank you, Tom. Next, public hearing is approval of a board order approving solid waste management fee adjustments for collection service. Dan Johnson, Director of Transportation and Development, will present with others. Go ahead, Dan.
Yes, correct. Good morning, Chair Smith, Commissioners, Administrator Schmidt. I'm joined by Rick Winterhalter, All Things Garbage for Clackamas County. Essentially, today's presentation brings you the recommended garbage and recycling collection service fees for unincorporated Clackamas County effective July 1st, 2021. Under the county's franchise system, which is established in our code, we oversee and manage an effective public-private partnership with our franchise haulers. More than 55,000 residential and commercial customers opt into our service across unincorporated Clackamas County. In garbage and, it's important to know, in garbage and recycling customer surveys, these services routinely score high marks related to the quality and the cost of the service. It's also important to know that customers can choose from a wide range of service levels with a range of costs and the services itself, if not required. As franchise administrators, per the county code, part of our work is to establish fees based upon a review of actual and known costs to provide the service. Each year, our staff, with a third-party independent CPA who has deep experience in solid waste fees, reviews detailed reports submitted by our eight garbage and recycling companies. This review is based on strong analysis and a careful scrutiny of the detailed reports from our garbage and recycling providers. We carefully vet this report, and staff scrubs through the details to ensure we are conservative in what costs are incorporated. These annual reviews mean that costs of doing business can be reviewed and accounted for, leading for smaller, more gradual increases, so the system does not fall behind. This is illustrated in the chart, Attachment 3, a chart in your attachments that illustrates our fee charges over time. Our fees track closely with economy, economy-wide cost indicators like the CPI or Consumer Price Index. This year's fee review process identified three primary costs that have been, that have been increased. These costs essentially fall into, they're following three categories: labor, fuel, and the cost of disposal at the transfer stations. After vetting the submitted costs for 2020, county staff submitted a report to the Solid Waste Commission, which is our public input and advisory body. This report included the proposed fees for the coming year for residential and commercial services across our fee zones. These same fees you reviewed in the July 15th policy session and that were brought before, and are being brought before you today. Essentially, the recommended fee increases account for costs that our garbage and recycling collectors are either already incurring or will incur, and the fee ensures that our haulers will be able to continue to collect garbage and recycle at homes and businesses while remaining within the acceptable range of an operating margin, which is further documented in the report provided to you. The Solid Waste Commission reviewed the fees under its responsibility identified in county code and unanimously recommended the proposed fee increase to the board for adoption. In our policy session on June 15th, the board approved the fees under its responsibility identified in the county code and unanimously recommended for the proposed fee increase for the board adoption. Essentially, we are here today, and staff respectfully recommends the board and county commissioners approve the attached board order adopting the solid waste management fee schedule as recommended by the Solid Waste Commission and as identified on Exhibit A. We'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have at this point in time.
You made a statement that the board unanimously adopted the fee increase. Is that correct that you said?
That is incorrect.
Would you like to correct that for the record, Mr. Johnson?
I would love to correct that statement. That'd vote a four to one, the board.
Well, thank you very much.
You're unfair. My apologies for the air.
Mr. Winterhalter, do you have any comments on this?
Uh, no, ma'am.
And how much is the fee increase?
It is approximately, it's between $1.35 and $2 across our.
And what is the percentage rate increase?
About 4% to 5%.
And what is the other percent rate increase?
Uh, in what regards, Madam Chair?
In regards to the three elements that are increasing?
Yes.
Oh. Well, I can give you labor. Labor's increasing at approximately.
2.8%.
Uh, yeah. Fuel, about 25%. And then we've got cost of disposal at transfer stations is 17%.
So the main fee increase is coming from Metro, an increase of 17% to Clackamas County citizens. I want that to be on the record. Thank you very much. Commissioners, Paul Savas, you're up.
Yeah, I just want to ask staff if they've had any progress based on our last decision, our, our last discussion when we made this initial approval to move this forward to the, today's hearing. If any feedback as to whether or not Metro will expand its outreach, about future cost increases related to the siting of the new facilities or rebuilding the facilities, but I, I want to, you know, I want to make it perfectly clear that, you know, my, my concerns really about this, and I know it's not our staff. We know this pass-through is from Metro. Even if we didn't do what we're doing, people that are going to go to the Metro transfer station are going to experience those, those fee increases regardless of what the action we take here today. And so really, my concern is that the future increases. So any progress on that kind of?
Those discussions are underway. We heard you loud and clear. In addition, we have actually, I actually reached out to other jurisdictions, Washington County, to have a discussion. It isn't my counterpart that leads that effort over there, so I have to build some new relationships over in Washington County, but we are reaching around regionally to have discussions about these, about this Metro increase. This and future ones.
Yep. I, I share Commissioner Smith's concerns. I feel that we're, we're stuck to some degree, and I'm just afraid that part of this increase is going to lead to the next increase, frankly, because if, if it's for a project or property acquisition, then obviously the next increase will be related to the building of that, and we need a stronger voice. Our constituents, the counties, the cities need a stronger voice in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. duly noted. Commissioner Fisher?
So, thank you, Dan, for the overview. And I missed the policy session because I was doing the local implementation plan for the Metro Council at the time, but, but I reviewed the materials, and I think I'm good moving forward. I'm just curious about kind of following up what Commissioner Savas said. I'm wanting to understand how this compares to our partner jurisdictions that also set fees. Are we like in the middle? Are we above, below? Do we have any indication about that within the region, about where these, these costs fall?
I'll start, and you can add as you see fit. Essentially, costs are costs in regards to the, you know, cost of labor, cost of fuel, et cetera, and Metro's costs that are established across the whole region. Essentially, when we look at our costs, there's an operating margin in there, and that operating margin is kind of really for our operators, is kind of basically where that leveling begins. And the region as a whole tries to get that operating margin between 8% and 12%, give or take. And we are consistent, that is a consistency across the entirety of the region.
Okay. And that translates into the amount that people pay?
Correct.
As being the same across the region?
Correct.
Okay.
And I want to expand one more time, because you weren't there. We had promised the board that we would also engage in a, in a broader discussion this fall and the winter because, because Metro has already established that price outside of this, of our circle of control. And so the discussion is how would this board like to engage with Metro going forward if they choose to increase, or if there is a discussion about rate increases in the future, and how would that take place? And that's work that we have to do and bring back to you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you, Rick. You may step down. We, I will now open the public hearing, and I will take testimony. We do have somebody in the room who would like to testify on this. Her name is Beth Vargas Duncan. Please come forward, state your name and your residence or group you're representing, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Smith, members of the commission. I am Beth Vargas Duncan. I represent the Clackamas County Refuge and Recycling Association. I work for Oregon Refuge and Recycling Association, but I staff the Clackamas County Refuge and Recycling Association in that capacity. So every Clackamas County hauler, that's what we call ourselves, the garbage collectors or haulers, providing garbage and recycling collection service in the county is a member of our association, of the Clackamas County Refuge and Recycling Association. All of us call them the haulers now going forward because that's a mouthful. We hope this message finds you safe and well during these uncertain times of COVID. Our members comply with rigorous standards for health and safety while providing Clackamas County customers with affordable, efficient, and environmentally sound operations. We continued service through COVID and the fires last year, and we will do our best through the heat that's upcoming. In partnership with the county, we have built an affordable, efficient, and progressive franchise waste collection program that serves a leadership role in recycling. Several of our members are expanding diversity, equity, and inclusion activities in their workforces and vendor networks. We also value environmental protections and provide quality service to all residents at a reasonable cost. Despite the COVID challenges, our members and county staff continue the routine of working diligently through the annual rate review process. We believe the rate review and setting process is fair with the right balance of independent review and transparency to assure reasonable rates for the haulers for their service and to the Clackamas County customers that we serve. We support the rate adjustments as recommended by the Solid Waste Commission, and we do have a, a call to action for our community, and we ask for their support in, in us providing safe and sustainable services. We ask customers to seal their garbage in bags to protect the health and safety of our essential workers and the Clackamas community. We encourage customers to tightly seal their garbage in bags and right-size their garbage carts so that garbage fits within the garbage containers for automated collection. This is particularly important as people dispose of added residential solid waste while staying at home. Reduce, reuse, and recycle right. Oregonians continue to lead the nation in recycling, and with more waste disposal at home, we asked residents to continually improve and seek the latest information on what is recyclable. But don't forget, the priority is to reduce consumption, reuse, then recycle. In conclusion, we ask the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners that you support the rates as recommended by the Solid Waste Commission, and we look forward to partnering with you in the future, and we appreciate the opportunity to serve Clackamas County.
Thank you. I don't see any other people. Beth, I appreciate you coming forward, representing the very central service to Clackamas County residents. Shannon, do we have anybody online? We do not. Okay. I will now close the hearing on this particular one, and I will ask for a motion.
I move we approve the board order approving the solid waste management fee adjustment for collection service.
Second.
Commissioner Shoal has made the motion, and Commissioner Savas has seconded it. Any further discussion on this topic? Seeing none. Shannon, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
No. Motion passes 4-1. Gary, what's up next?
Dan has a quick announcement. Go ahead, Dan.
Almost a public service announcement. In light of the heat this weekend, this is a great opportunity to inform our public that we have authorized our haulers to do earlier collection than normal over these upcoming days, over these weekend hours while the temperature is in place. I just thought we'd take this time to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Commissioners, we need to move back to the prior item on the county parks fine and code changes because we inadvertently had an error that Amanda, you will tell, tell us what, what we need to, you need to do, please.
All right. I don't know if my microphone.
You're on.
Okay, perfect. So when we did the approval, we didn't read the ordinance by title or in full as a part of the approval, and so we need to, to go back and, and take care of that piece.
I think that was.
I apologize, your script did not say that, so it was not on you, Commissioners. We, we missed it, I'm sorry. But thank you to Tom, who caught it. So there's, so there, just so we do it correctly. So what, what exactly needs to happen, Amanda?
So we need with the motion for approval that they read by title only, and if there are no objections from any of the Commissioners?
Would you please continue? Yes, whatever needs to be done.
Sure. So a Commissioner would make a motion to?
I, I move to read by title only.
Second. The motion has been made by Commissioner Savas to read by title only. The, which one was this?
County Parks Ordinance.
The County Parks Ordinance. Thank you, Paul. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Fisher. Is that clear enough for our records? Okay, thank you. Seeing no further comment on this. Shannon, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Are we okay now?
Is that it? Do they have to read the title again now, or are we good?
I believe that title, just read by title only is sufficient.
That works. We're good, Tom? Okay. Thank you for catching it, Tom. Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Commissioners. Sorry about that. Okay.
That's okay. Stuff happens. Gary, what's up next?
Item three, public hearing. Approval of a Clackamas County supplemental budget resolution for fiscal year 2020-2021. Increase in appropriations of $6,646,390 funded through fund balance, federal and state operating grants, and interfund transfers. Elizabeth Comfort, Finance Director, will present. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Administrator Schmidt, and good morning, Chair and Commissioners. This is our final supplemental budget for fiscal year 2021 for Clackamas County. To summarize the larger changes of the amount Administrator Schmidt read of $6,646,390. Item number four outlines the Business and Economic Development Fund, recognizing $2.7 million of additional CARES revenue and appropriating for special payments to the business grants program. Item number five outlines the Disaster Management Fund, recognizing $2.7 million of CARES funding and appropriating appropriate operating costs associated with COVID-19 wildfires and the ice storm events. Item number nine outlines the CCOM Fund, recognizing .8 million of funding from CARES, Oregon Department of Forestry, and State 911 Tax, and appropriating higher operational costs associated with COVID-19 wildfires and the ice storm events. The remaining recommended budget adjustments are needed to meet operational projections and remain in compliance with budget law. Please note that there are two items totaling $400,000 that were added to the supplemental after the newspaper publishing deadline. Those are the General Fund, in the General Fund Assessor's Department, recognizing $130,000 in additional CARES revenue, and for the Central Dispatch Fund, also known as CCOM, recognizing $300,000 in additional Oregon Department of Forestry revenue. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So the increase in appropriations of $6.6 million roughly, are those funds dedicated?
Majority of them, yes. They're coming in from.
So they're already spoken for?
Absolutely.
Okay. So it's just not free money that we can take it and spend it elsewhere?
No, they, they are all accounted for and dedicated to expenditures in this fiscal year.
I want to be very clear on that. Thank you. Do any of the Commissioners have any comments or questions for the presenter? I will now open a public hearing on this topic, and I will take any in-person testimony first. Seeing none. Shannon, do we have anybody on Zoom?
We do not.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. I will now call for a motion.
I move we approve the Clackamas County supplemental budget resolution for fiscal year 2020-2021. Increase in appropriations of $6,646,390 funded through fund balance, federal and state operating grants, and interfund transfers.
Second. The motion has been made by Commissioner Shoal and seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any other further discussion on this? Seeing none. Seeing none, Shannon, please call the poll.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes four zero.
Gary, what's up next?
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next public hearing, number four. Approval of a resolution for bid exemption and authorization to use the CMGC RFP procurement method for the Oak Lodge and Gladstone Community Projects. We have Allegra Willhite from Business and Community Services.
Gary, for the next two hearings, we will be vote as the Clackamas Board of County Commissioners and the North Clackamas Parks and Rec District. Do I... Are we staying as Clackamas County Board of Commissioners for this one?
Thank you, Chair.
Because my script is not clear, and I'm reading exactly from my script, but it's not clear.
You're right. I missed it, Chair. I'm sorry. Thank you. The heat has gotten to me already, and it's not even hot yet. All right. So yes, you're going to convene as two different boards for this item. First, as a Clackamas County Board of County Commissioners. So Allegra, please go ahead and introduce our guests.
Hello, Chair, Commissioners, and County Administrator. My name is Allegra Willhite, and I'm Deputy Director with Business and Community Services. Today, I'm joined by Ryan Rice from County Procurement and Jason Varga, our Project Manager for this project. Today, we are seeking approval of a resolution for an exemption to our regular procurement method. That's to allow for the use of an alternative selection process to contract with the construction manager, general contractor, for the Oak Lodge and Gladstone Community Project, which will create two new libraries, a community center, and a park for county residents. This is a joint project between BCS and NCPRD, so as our County Administrator mentioned, you will have two public hearings for the same request. Ryan Rice from County Procurement will provide the details on our request for this proposed exemption to the current procurement process.
Thank you, Allegra. As Allegra said, my name is Ryan Rice with County Procurement. Thank you for having me, and we have partnered with BCS and NCPRD as well as our County Council Office to seek this resolution. And as Allegra pointed out, this is an exciting project. It's actually a unique project in that it has two libraries, a community center, and a park all wrapped up together. So this is a perfect candidate for what we would refer to as a CMGC. That is a construction manager, general contractor project. In accordance to our local contracting review board rules, public improvement construction-type projects like this need to utilize a standard bidding process. So that is a process that involves a bid schedule, engineered specifications, site drawings, anything that goes along with that project. It's already been vetted out. We would put that out into the market, and then our selection would be based on a low bid. Price is it. That's the only thing we're looking for in this scenario. However, in an RFP, a Request for Proposal, the process is where we would select the contractor based on subjective factors: experience, approach, project team, and price. They all factor into our selection in that case. The RFP process is commonly used for projects that contain unknown factors. They're more complex. They have special conditions, all things that our library and our parks project here check those boxes with. Through the RFP process, we're going to select a contractor and use the CMGC method. The CMGC method is where the owner hires the construction contractor to provide feedback during the design phase before the start of construction. The benefits of the CMGC method include fostering innovation, improving design quality. We have risk control involved in that. We have cost control. We can optimize construction schedules. And in addition to all that, the CMGC method is that the design firm and the construction contractor will develop a guaranteed maximum price that ensures the project is completed within scope, timeline, and budget. Our LCRB, along with the Oregon State and statute, empowers the board to grant an exemption like this from our standard bidding process. In order to do that, the board must authorize an alternative process... Before the board can authorize an alternative process, it has to approve two findings. First, the exemption is unlikely to encourage favoritism, and two, that this is going to have substantial benefits to our public agency. So for the first finding regarding competition, the use of an RFP process ensures maximum competition for both our general contractor and its subcontractors. The RFP package was going to be published in a newsprint format with our Business Tribune as well as published on the state-run procurement platform as previously called ORPEN. It's now referred to as Oregon Buys. That's what they've transitioned to. Our RFP package is also going to contain requirements that the contractor will adhere to prevailing wage, bully requirements, as well as conduct outreach to minority, women, and emerging small businesses. Secondly, the second finding is regarding substantial cost savings and benefits to our agency. Having the CMGC onboard during the design is going to help identify efficiencies. It's going to evaluate alternative options as we move forward. It's going to provide creative value engineering, provide real-time market pricing, and it's going to identify the most cost-effective methods and sequencing. The CMGC can coordinate with the design and staff on technical complexities early on in the project, making them less costly and to be addressed earlier rather than they... Rather if they needed to be addressed later in the design. The CMGC process provides an accelerated timeline allowing for project... The project to mitigate inflation risks. In a final summation of the benefits of selecting a project firm through a competitive RFP, this process will allow the county to select a contractor based upon factors in addition to price. Price not alone in that selection. It's going to allow our firm... Selection of a firm whose proven experience and proposed solutions matches the nature of the required work in both the design and the construction phases. So for these reasons, we recommend adoption of the resolution for the RFP method to select a CMG contractor for our Oak Lodge and Gladstone Community Project. Are there questions for the procurement method?
Do we have any question for the presenters? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chair Smith. I really appreciate this. I like this model because having input on the design process helps keep a more cohesive process, so I appreciate it. We've done work on this, Commissioner, and Commissioner Schrader's taken the lead on the... Sort of the values and principles of C2P2 in contracting. I know that those values are being integrated in our courthouse procurement process. How are they reflected within this process?
Yeah, great question. So those are things that we are weaving into our procurement processes right now, and this will certainly fall within that camp. How that's actually going to look, we're not sure because we're writing the RFP, but it will certainly be encompassing the training and the outreach that will be needed, like C2P2.
Oh, good. Because just making sure that certain contractors value apprenticeship, and we make sure that we're using public good to promote an industry through their processes would be great. And I would love just to put a little checking because I'm so interested in this. If I could, when you get down there, if I could see the procurements, just so I can understand that language and...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We'd love to.
Just read it. Thank you so much.
Seeing no other questions, I will now open the public hearing on this item. Is there anybody in the audience in person who wishes to testify on this particular item? Seeing none. Shannon, is there anybody on Zoom?
There is not.
I will now close the public hearing on this item, and I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve resolution granting an exception from the competitive bidding for the Oak Lodge Library and Community Center and Gladstone Library projects by means of a construction manager, general contractor, and authorizing selection by request for proposals.
Second. Um, there's a tie.
You get to break it, Chair Smith.
Jeepers. The motion was made by Commissioner Savas and believed seconded by Commissioner Shoal. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, Commissioner... I mean, not Commissioner. Shannon, please call the poll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes. Gary, what's up next?
All right. You're now going to discuss the exact same item, but you're going to do it sitting as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation Board.
I will now announce the board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board for the next item.
So for the record, this is approval of a resolution for bid exemption and authorization to use the GCMGC RFP procurement method for the Oak Lodge and Gladstone Community Project. Allegra, anything else you'd like to add?
No, this is the same motion... This is the same issue that you just heard about. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and your presentation was quite complete. Any other Commissioner comments or questions? I will now open the meeting for public testimony on this for anybody in the room who would like to testify. Seeing none. Shannon, is there anybody on Zoom?
There is not.
I will now close the public hearing on this item, and I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve resolution granting an exception from competitive bidding for the Oak Lodge Library and Community Center and Gladstone Library projects by means of a construction manager, general contractor, and authorizing selection by request for proposals.
Second. Commissioner Shoal has made the motion, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Shannon, please call the poll.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much for coming in today and doing good work. Gary, what's up next?
Thank you. Next, you have one final public hearing, which is Water Environment Services Public Hearing. So Chair, if you will read that.
I will now announce the board will recess as the NCPRD Board and convene as a Water Environment Services Board for the next item.
The item is approval of a resolution for a Water Environment Services supplemental budget for fiscal year 2020-2021. Chris Story from Water Environment Services will present.
Good morning, Chair Smith, Commissioners, and District Administrator Schmidt. We are happy to share with you today the final public hearing of the day, which is the adoption of a supplemental budget for Clackamas Water Environment Services. This is to reflect the revenue received from a bond sale that you approved in February and we executed in March, and we are actually making the first debt service payment here in June in this fiscal year. So this is an adjustment to the budget for the bond sale that was not anticipated in the original budget, adopted the previous June.
Oh, that's interesting. I was wondering why you were here again.
Always a joy to be here.
Not that, you know, I don't mind seeing you, Chris. It's just that... Okay, very good. Do the Commissioners have any qualifying questions or comments? I will now open the public... Meeting for public testimony. I will take the in-person testimony first. Seeing none. Shannon, do we have anybody online?
We do not.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. I will now entertain a motion.
I move we approve resolution for a Water Environment Services supplemental budget for fiscal year 2020-21.
Second.
Commissioner Schrader has made the motion, and Commissioner Shoal has seconded. Any further discussion? Shannon, please take the poll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Chris, for your hard work.
Gary, we will now reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners for the Consent Agenda.
Yes, Chair. Next up is the Consent Agenda. It is quite long, so Shannon and I will rotate, reading the Consent Agenda. Grab a cup of tea, relax, stretch if you need to. This will take a while, but we'll go through it as quickly as we can. So Shannon, would you please start by reading the Consent Agenda by title only?
Approval of a local subrecipient agreement with Children's Center to provide child abuse medical assessments. $1,000... Sorry, $181,800 funded through County General Fund. Approval of a subrecipient grant, Amendment Number Three, with Community Living Above to provide youth marijuana and substance abuse prevention efforts in West Lynn-Wilsonville. Amendment Number Three adds $30,000 for a maximum value of $120,000 and extends the end date to June 30, 2022. Funded through marijuana tax revenue, no County General Fund involvement. Approval of a local subrecipient grant agreement, Amendment Number Two, with Todos Juntos to provide kindergarten readiness partnership and innovation services. Amendment Number Two adds $67,630 for a maximum value of $286,341 and extends the end date to September 30, 2021. Funded through the state of Oregon, no County General Fund involvement. Approval of a local grant agreement with Clackamas Women's Services for Shelter Advocacy and Crisis Domestic Violence Services, $214,696 funded through County General Fund. Approval of a subrecipient grant, Amendment Number Three, with Northwest Family Services for Youth Marijuana and Substance Abuse Prevention Efforts in North Clackamas Middle Schools. Amendment Number Three adds $90,000 for a maximum value of $360,000 and extends the date to June 30, 2022. Funded through the Clackamas County Marijuana Tax Revenue, no County General Fund involvement. Approval of a local subrecipient grant agreement with Northwest Family Services for children of incarcerated parents and parenting inside-out services, funded through County General Fund, $72,000. State of Oregon Funds, $40,000, and Juvenile Funds, $10,000, for a total of $122,000. Approval of a local subrecipient grant agreement with Northwest Family Services for Casa Esperanza, culturally-specific domestic violence shelter and services, $117,225 funded through County General Fund. Approval of a local subrecipient grant, Amendment Number Four, with Northwest Family Services for Student Resource Coordination. Amendment Number Four adds $60,000 for a maximum of $330,950. Funded through the Behavioral Health and Children, Family, and Community Connections Marijuana Tax Funds, no County General Fund involvement. Approval of Amendment Number One to the Intergovernmental Agreement Number 166036 with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for the operation and financing of community mental health, addiction treatment, recovery and prevention services, and problem gambling programs. Amendment Number One adds $407,520, increasing the maximum value to $8,732,212.18. Funded through the state of Oregon, no County General Fund involvement. Approval for a revenue agreement with CARE Oregon for the Primary Care Payment Model Program, per-member-per-month incentive program. There is no maximum agreement. Revenue is based on number of clients reported, no County General Fund involvement. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Fire District Number One for the Project Hope Program. Contract maximum is $40,487.20. Funded through the University of Baltimore, combating opioid overdose through community-level intervention initiative, no County General Fund involvement. Approval of Amendment Number One to the intra-agency agreement with Clackamas Health Centers Division for School-Based Health Centers Operating Funds. The maximum agreement value is $213,250. Funded through Public Health, no County General Fund involvement. Approval of Amendment Number One to a grant agreement with Northwest Housing Alternatives for Emergency Shelter Services. This amendment adds $132,240 with a new maximum of $344,311. Funded through the state of Oregon, no County General Funds involvement. Approval of Amendment Number One to a grant agreement with Clackamas Women's Services for Emergency Shelter Services. Amendment Number One adds $117,760 for a new maximum of $229,689. Funded through the state of Oregon, no County General Fund involvement. Approval of Amendment Number Five to the Intergovernmental Subrecipient Agreement with the City of Sandy, Sandy Senior and Community Center, to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. This amendment decreases the contract maximum by $23,278 for a revised agreement maximum of $181,124. With funding through Older Americans Act and Ride Connection, Inc., pass-through funds, no County General Fund involvement. Approval of Amendment Number Five to Agency Subrecipient Agreement with Friends of Canby Adult Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. The amendment adds $19,565 with a maximum value of $247,991. With funding through the Older Americans Act, Ride Connection Pass-Through Funds, and Low-Income Energy Assistance Program, no County General Fund involvement. Approval of Amendment Number Five to Intergovernmental Subrecipient Agreement with City of Lake Oswego, Lake Oswego Adult Community Center, to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. The amendment adds $42,497 with a maximum value of $125,726. With funding through Older Americans Act and Ride Connection, Inc., pass-through funds, no County General Fund involvement. Approval to apply for grant from Portland General Electric Drive Change Fund to purchase electric vehicles to provide services for seniors, persons with disabilities, and low-income households. The maximum agreement value is $425,000. With funding through Oregon Clean Fuels Program, no County General Fund involvement. Approval of a subrecipient grant, Amendment Number Three, with Todos Juntos for Youth Marijuana and Substance Prevention Services in rural Clackamas County. The amendment adds $60,000 with maximum value of $240,000, and it extends the end date to June 30, 2022, with funding through marijuana tax revenue, no County General Fund involvement. Approval of Amendment Number Two to Intergovernmental Agreement Number 166036 with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for the operation and financing of community mental health, addiction treatment, recovery and prevention services, and problem gambling programs. The amendment adds $14,000 with a maximum value of $8,746,212.18. With funding through the state of Oregon, Oregon Health Authority, no County General Fund involvement. Approval to apply to the 2021-2023 Request for Grant Proposals with the State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for Special Court Grant Program, Mental Health Court. The maximum agreement value is $254,768. With funding through the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission, no County General Fund[1762.86] no county general fund involvement. Approval to apply to the 2021 to 2023 request for grant proposals with State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for Specialty Court Grant Program, Adult Drug Court. The maximum agreement value is $242,484. With funding through Oregon Criminal Justice Commission, no county general fund involvement. Approval to apply to the 2021 to 2023 request for grant proposals with the state of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for Specialty Court Grant Program, DUII Court. The maximum value agreement is yet to be determined by the state. Funding through Oregon Criminal Justice Commission, no county general fund involvement. Approval of intergovernmental agreement number 169358 with the state of Oregon, acting by and through its Department of Human Services for the Job Opportunity and Basic Skills Jobs Program. The maximum agreement value is $1150,550.75. With funding through State of Oregon Department of Human Services, no county general fund involvement.
Good job, Shannon. All right. Six more pages, commissioners.
Okay, go, Gary.
All right. Transportation and Development. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the Oregon Department of Transportation for OR 212 at Foster Road Intersection Signal Improvements. $20,000 funded through the County Road Fund, no general funds involved. Approval of an amendment to the supplemental project agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Jennings Avenue, Oregon 99E to Oatfield Road Project. The amendment incorporates language changes to the original supplemental agreement. Funding through the Federal Surface Transportation Program funds $3,625,283. Surface Transportation Program Fund Exchange, $1 million, and the County Road Fund matched $652,626. For a project cost estimate of $5,277,909. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a master grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for Fund Exchange Program. Annual funding varies and is determined by the Oregon Department of Transportation. The current total amount available to Clackamas County is $4,071,653. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a contract with Brown Contracting Incorporated for the Sunnyside Road ADA Ramp Improvements, 132nd to 162nd. $1,477,774. Seventy-seven, I'm sorry. $1,477,774. Funded through the County Road Fund, no county general funds involved. Approval of a contract with Traffic Safety Supply Company for the purchase of sign and safety materials. $800,000 through June 30th, 2027. Funded by the County Road Fund, no county general funds involved. Under the Finance Department, approval of a lease amendment number two with the Oak Grove Library with RCI Enterprises LLC. The amendment adds $7,286.22. With an annual increase of 3% per year for a three-year term. Total potential contract value is $270,251.76. Funded through library tax dollars, no county general fund is involved. Approval of a Clackamas County Sheriff's Office Aurora Airplane Hangar G6 lease agreement with the Raymond V. Meyer and Mary G. Meyer Trust Reserve. $4,326. Funded through the County General Fund, with an annual increase of 3% per year for a five-year term. Total contract value is $22,967.33. Approval of the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office Sergeant Damon Coats Boathouse Slip 1F lease agreement with Sportcraft Landing Incorporated. $12,205.50. Funded through the County General Fund, with an annual increase of 3% per year for a five-year term. Total contract value is $64,800.62. Approval of a lease amendment number two for the Homestead Building with Homestead Building LLC for the Sandy Behavioral Health Center. Amendment number two increases the monthly rent to $4,300. Total contract value is $51,600. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a lease amendment number one for the Butler Building and Adjacent Parking with the Glenn Kent Butler Revocable Living Trust and Glenna K. Butler Living Trust. Monthly rent is $4,094.25. Plus 13 monthly parking spaces at $1,625 each, for a total monthly cost of $5,719.25. The total contract value is $68,631. Funding is through the County General Fund. Approval of an extension of lease number two for the Willamette Building with Willamette Building Partnership. Monthly rent is $7,363.96. Total annual rent of $88,367.52. Discounted 5% annual rent payment of $83,949.15. Total maximum contract value is $273,134.88. Funded through the Children, Family, and Community Connections, Corrections, Connections Division of Health Housing and Human Services, supplemented by federal and state grants and allocated by labor hours logged into each program. No county general funds are involved. Shannon, back to you.
Approval of previous business meeting minutes. Approval to purchase five vehicles from Withnell Motor Corporation, DBA Withnell Dodge, for use by Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Cost per vehicle is $34,448.91. For a total not to exceed value of $172,244.55. Funded through County General Fund through the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office Budget. Approval to purchase body cameras from Axon Enterprise for use by Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. $1,588,994.50. And is funded through the budgeted county general funds within the sheriff's and enhanced law enforcement programs, as well as public safety, local option levy funds. Approval to apply for grant funding through the United States Department of Justice Office, Office of Justice Programs for the Community Policing Development, for the Community Policing Development Crisis Intervention Teams. Maximum award value of $250,000. Funded through the U.S. Department of Justice, no county general fund involvement. Approval to apply for grant funding through the United States Department of Justice Connect and Protect Law Enforcement and Behavioral Health Response Grant Solicitation. Maximum award of $550,000. Match requirement is 20% for years one and two, and 40% for year three. Match funded through the budgeted county general funds within sheriff's operations and enhanced law enforcement programs, as well as public safety, local option levy funds. Request by Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to enter into an annual operating and financial plan with USDA Forest Service for cooperative law enforcement services in the Mount Hood National Forest. $71,467.66 is the annual operating plan cost. Funded by USDA Forest Service, no county general fund involvement. Request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to approve modification number four, adding $10,000 in COVID-19 funding to the cooperative law enforcement services in the Mount Hood National Forest. This is an increase to $81,467.66 for the 2021 annual operating plan. Funded by the USDA Forest Service, no county general fund involvement. Approval of amendment number one with Hawkins, Dellafield, and Wood LLP to serve as the P3 legal advisor. Amendment number one adds $1 million for a total contract value of $1,500,000. Funded through the County General Fund for 50% of the contract amount, with 50% match from the Oregon Courthouse Construction and Improvement Fund. Approval of amendment number one with WTP America LLC, DBA WT Partnership to serve as a P3 technical advisor. Amendment number one adds $2,071,125. For a total contract amount of $2,564,625. Funded through County General Fund for 50% of the contract amount, with 50% match from the Oregon Courthouse Construction and Improvement Fund. Approval of amendment number one with IMG Rebel Advisory, Inc., to serve as a P3 financial and transactional advisor. Amendment number one is for the amount, adds, sorry, $900,000 for a total contract value of $1.2 million. Funded through the County General Fund for 50% of the county contract amount, with 50% match from the Oregon Courthouse Construction and Improvement Fund.
I'll take it up here. Under Disaster Management. Approval of a contract with DePaul Industries Doing Business as DPI Staffing to provide on-call temporary traffic control for the COVID-19 vaccination sites. $150,000 funded through CARES Act funding, no county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon, acting by and through its Department of Administrative Services for vaccine equity and incentives. Maximum cost is $2,238,888.68. Funded through the state of Oregon, no county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Business Development Department and Clackamas County for receipt of personal protective equipment. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Approval of a fiscal year 18 State Homeland Security Program Grant Agreement Extension between Clackamas County and the state of Oregon Regional Fuel Shortage Plan. The agreement will remain the same, no county general funds are involved. Under Tourism and Cultural Affairs. Approval of a contract to receive regional cooperative tourism program funds for fiscal year 2021 from Travel Portland. This amount is $169,511 in revenue through Travel Portland's Regional Cooperative Tourism Program. No county general funds are involved. That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. You made me thirsty.
I should have brought you some water.
Me too, yeah.
I do have water here. It was quite good. Yeah, thank you for that. A very long consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything, any items from the list?
Hmm. Do you want us to reread the list?
Oh, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion has been made to, by Commissioner Schrader and seconded by Commissioner Savas to approve the consent agenda. I will add at this late hour, Commissioner Fisher has been excused. Shannon, please call the roll. Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Gary, what's next?
You have one more consent agenda, but this time you will be sitting as the North Clackamas Parks Board.
I will now announce the board will recess as a Board of County Commissioners and reconvene as the NCPRD Board for the consent agenda.
So next up is the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda. Shannon, would you please read the consent agenda by title only?
Approval of an intergovernmental agreement amendment number one between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Clackamas Community College for community-based instructional programs. This IGA will provide $11,631 of revenue, no county general fund involved. Approval of amendment number one to renew intergovernmental agreement between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Clackamas Community College for educational and enrichment services. This IGA represents $51,792 of anticipated instructional expenditure. Funding is included in the budget expenditures for older adult and recreation program services, no county general fund involvement. Approval of a resolution for North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Supplemental Budget, less than 10% in budget reduction for fiscal year 2020-2021.
Do any commissioners wish to remove any items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the NCPRD Consent Agenda.
Second. Commissioner Shoal has moved for approval of the consent agenda. Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Shannon, please call the poll. Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Mr. Shoal?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Gary, what's up next?
Next, Chair, you will adjourn as the Parks Board and reconvene as the county commissioners.
I will announce the board will adjourn as the NCPRD Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. Up next, we have public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of the board consideration and should be nonpartisan nature. As the BCC is a nonpartisan governing Oregon municipal corporation under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I will hear in-person testimony. We have three cards. The first up is Yvonne Lazarus. Please come forward, state your name, residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. This morning, I rode up in the elevator with Martha, and I told her I didn't want to be here. I do not feel that the things I've come to speak to you about have been looked at. I know that, that a lot of people write things, so I'm going to have to write, and I will As Martha and I were talking in the elevator, and I didn't plan on talking about this, but I'm going to, as we were talking in the elevator, I said to her that, because she wanted to know why, you know, she looked at me, "Oh, it's not a good day." And I said to her, "You know, the people who work in this building are bound by the pledge the commissioners make. If they work with a commissioner in any way for anything, they're bound by that." And I feel that there are committees and councils that are not doing that. I am hoping that this situation is going to stop, but I will come back and come back on it until I get answers. And I will try to get something into you on paper before next Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. Up next is Les Poole. Please come forward, state your name, residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning again, Les Poole. I'm looking forward to us not needing to wear masks out here, and it'll be a little easier to hear and whatnot. Very briefly, a lot of folks don't understand how the funding has worked with CARES. That's federal funding that was billions of dollars that was sent out to various jurisdictions. Unfortunately for Clackamas County, we have 430,000 residents, and I don't know all the details, but in essence, if you had less than 500,000 population, you got your money elsewhere. And so much of the control and reimbursement and ability of the county to function and receive funding from CARES runs through our governor. And I do appreciate the hard work it took to get that 65% vaccination number to help get things moving along, because our businesses are hurting. We are suffering, and that message has been clear since the start of the meeting. Something else that was clear at the start of the meeting, and Yvonne just mentioned it, and that's getting answers to questions. There was some frustration, understandably, during the Housing Authority Consent Agenda about you folks not getting answers. And in turn, the public feels the same way quite often. And although she isn't here, Commissioner Fisher hasn't answered some appalling questions about her conduct and about money that's been spent, apparently, to unseat Commissioner Shoal. And I'm still wondering when we'll hear some answers on that. But while that is an unfortunate situation, I think what Yvonne shared and what Martha shared in the elevator, of all places, there's a real message there. The last thing that I want to mention is that there's been some pretty outrageous claims about the folks that appeared here by Chris Waller, Weller, the young lady that hopes to lead the charge to recall Mr. Shoal here. And over and over in Pamplin, I've read interpretations that were, well, let's just say, so biased and so outlandish and so destructive that I haven't commented. But I will comment at this time by simply saying, the June 10th meeting was a symbol to you, a message to you, a message to government, that folks want to be heard, that folks are concerned, and that issues like vaccine passports need to be aired. Unfortunately, that has yet to happen, but I would again ask that that issue be placed on the agenda in the future. Thank you, as always.
Thank you, Les Poole. Up next is Gina Tollerino. Please come forward, state your name, residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners and Chair. My name is Gina Tollerino. I am from Happy Valley. I just want to go over some news that you guys may not be aware of. Peter Dazek, a leading virologist and signer of the Landset's letter calling the lab-leak idea a conspiracy, was found to have competing interests, as Dr. Fauci's NIH has given his organization Eco Health Alliance almost four million, or over $4 million at this point. $600,000 of it was given directly to the Wuhan Institute of Virology. Should we trust any information coming from Fauci, the NIH, or anyone beholden to them, or any... or anyone else who receives money from the pharmaceutical industrial complex? I would say no. Should we trust our news media, our social media platforms who censor the truth, try to control lives, give warnings on ideas, delete posts that contradict the current narrative? Should we trust our government officials, federal and state, who have covered these huge medical companies who try to popularize this experimental vaccination? Should we trust any government or company using million-dollar lotteries, incessant propaganda campaigns, peer pressure, or the fear of job and education loss to coerce us into receiving these vaccines? Should we trust our own family doctors who are being paid, in some cases, definitely censored and absolutely threatened with firing if they don't push these vaccines? There are many doctors speaking out against vaccinating everyone, including Dr. Michael Yaden, a former Pfizer Vice President, just warned on June ninth, 2021, that children are fifty to a hundred times more likely to die from the COVID vaccine than from the virus itself. He went on to point out that the five hundred vax deaths reported to VAERS in the first six months of 2021 is astronomically high, as normally there are only two hundred vax deaths per year for all vaccines combined. He also says he thinks the whole point of the pandemic and the lies in the vaccines was to get you to digital ID, which we know has begun. Vietnam will give each person a personal QR code to develop governmental-issued ID. It will be integrated into a smart traffic monitoring system already in place, like they have in China. The EU has announced plans for a digital wallet for citizens to access a wide range of private and public services with a single online ID. Didn't they already have access to things previous to COVID-19? The Gates Foundation has been planning this exact thing for years with many other companies. It's called ID 2020. The purpose of the digital ID is to geofence individuals, track and monitor behavior, assign social credit score, track and limit resources, including food and money. The Nuremberg Code is obviously against all these things, but these directives are not being followed. Also importantly, I'd like to point out that Commissioner Shoal is wrongly being punished and Commissioner Sonia Fisher seems to be corrupt. We, the people, are tired of this junk and we ask that this Board of Commissioners look into this information, learn the truth for yourselves, rather than depending on government-run publicity campaigns to make choices for you. Be brave and independent. People will stand with you if you do, like we stand with Commissioner Shoal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next, and our last in-public person, is Lila Blakely. Please come forward, state your name, residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Lila Blakely. I'm from Sandy, Oregon. And again, I'm asking you, as a board, to readdress Commissioner Mark Shoal's proposal for our county regarding the banning of mask and vaccine passport mandates. To have the citizens of this county and state show proof of their medical history not only is deliberately causing segregation between those who have had the CCP gene therapy shot and those who have not, but is also causing a great divide between family, friends, coworkers, and public places of accommodation. It's a big step in denying constitutional rights to a portion of our citizens and our constituents. And in case you weren't aware of what happened yesterday, thinking tree spirits, and this is their exact words, "We have chosen to cancel the High Step Society concert scheduled to take place tonight, 6:23. Our highest priority is to ensure the safety of our staff and our community. It's unfortunate, we have had received communication from outside organizations that leave us questioning that safety. The negative response was based on our decision to host a full-capacity vaccinated event." So in other words, no one else was invited to come unless they were vaccinated. And I just, seriously, I don't think we, as citizens of this county, want to continue to see this type of division taking place here. And we want to be able to frequent places that are of public accommodation, and this is just not happening. Now, Commissioner, Chair Smith, I'm fully aware that you are in favor of Senator Thatcher's Bill eight seventy-two, and I appreciate that. But words are not actions, and we want to see some action in our county by each one of you. We are not under any law but only an emergency mandate, which we all know is not constitutional. I've received information from the Clackamas County Chief Operating Officer and the Finance Director who collaborated, answers for questions I had submitted. And one of them was regarding the money and the different, well, how much money does this county stand to gain if you follow Governor Brown's directives? And their answer to me was, the state of Oregon has a formula for distribution of funding. Clackamas County received our share of the dollars according to that state formula. The directives of the Governor's Office are state law and are followed by all county jurisdictions. All are used and accounted for in expenditures. Well, I want to know the specifics of who received those funds. And they also mentioned that this is state law. I would like to know exactly what law is being followed by having received those dollars. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Shannon, do we have anybody online to testify?
Yes, we do.
And how many?
We have six.
Okay. Please proceed.
First up is Michael Weber. Michael, please unmute. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Shannon and Commissioners. Michael Weber, Jennings Lodge. I requested, I'm sorry, I request today that the Commissioners draft a proclamation against any aggressive political behavior in public. What happened in Clackamas Park last Friday reflects very poorly on our community and makes it less likely for people to come to Clackamas to start their business, raise their family, or visit on vacation. Close to home, we are seeing the stirrings of the type of behavior that can quickly spin out of control. In this very room, we have seen disruptive behavior. In Salem, armed radicals invaded the state Capitol after Mike Niemann let them in. When Larry Didway, Superintendent of Oregon City School District, criticized flag waves as a display of white supremacy, he received death threats and a mob descended upon the school administration building displaying hand gestures of white supremacy. Peaceful demonstration has a place in bending the arc of justice. Sitting in the front of a bus or at the lunch counter of Woolworths are examples of peaceful protests. Proudly displaying the Stars and Stripes in honor of our fallen veterans on Memorial Day or to celebrate Independence Day is patriotic. Making death threats to those who you disagree with or aggressively marching up and down the sidewalks in McLaughlin with your flag and assault rifle are neither peaceful nor patriotic. I find it offensive that groups wrap themselves in the American flag and First Amendment as a camouflage for their hate and intolerance. To hold flag-waving gatherings for the primary purpose of antagonizing the enemy in order to pick a fight is reprehensible and desecrating the very values that our flag represents. I am thankful that it was just paintballs and pepper spray fired last week, as the battleground chosen that day was filled with families and children. Putting the public in harm's way while you goad your perceived enemy shows a total lack of judgment and an utter disregard for the public safety. Those armed, aggressive spectacles must cease before someone gets seriously hurt or killed. We have seen what this type of behavior leads to when taken to its logical extreme. The peaceful protest run over by a car in Charlottesville, the murder of two demonstrators in Kenosha, Wisconsin, the domestic terrorist attack that left five dead in our nation's capital. It is time to nip this in the bud. It is time to take a stand and make every citizen in this county feel safe and welcome. It is time to stop blowing dog whistles that feed the beasts on your social media. It is time to be part of the solution rather than contributing to the problem. Please make it clear in an official pronouncement that partisan aggression, regardless of political stripe, runs counter to our values and is not welcome in Clackamas County. Thank you.
And who's up next?
Chris Waller is up next. Chris, please unmute, state your name and place of residence. You'll have three minutes.
Chris Waller, Jennings Lodge. Last week's event at Clackamas Park showed us that Clackamas County is not immune from political violence. It isn't something that's imported from Portland. It's something that is growing right here, right now, as hate groups become more and more active and visible in our county. Our commission needs to act now to show their unified opposition to this threat to our democracy. This week, the Western State Center released a letter signed by twenty-eight local businesses, including businesses that operate in Clackamas County, such as Northwest Natural, and that serve and represent Clackamas residents, such as Oregon Tradeswomen, Oregon Entrepreneurs' Network, and the Metropolitan Association of Realtors. They wrote, "We believe that escalating political violence threatens to dismantle our democratic institutions. By coming together to denounce political violence, attacks on our access to democracy, and threats of violence, we can effectively counter bigoted and anti-democratic activity and recommit ourselves to building an inclusive democracy that reflects our shared values." And they said this, "Every Oregonian deserves to be able to participate in our democracy and civil discourse without fear, intimidation, or unnecessary barriers. Elected officials who explicitly or subtly encourage this political violence should be held accountable. Anyone indulging conspiracy theories or engaging with movements that exploit bigotry to raise campaign dollars is complicit. We commit to withholding all forms of support, including campaign contributions, for political candidates who either actively support political violence or neglect to condemn political violence when it comes from their allies or supporters." It's important to note what this points out. Supporting political violence doesn't require active participation. If you spread conspiracy theories that whip people into a frenzy, such as demanding action against nonexistent vaccine passports, then invite these people to disrupt this meeting, you're supporting potential political violence. If you attend rallies and speak alongside proud boys and hate preachers, you're supporting potential political violence. If you're Facebook friends with Mike Niemann, you're supporting actual political violence. Such behavior is not appropriate for the leaders of our county. It's clear that this is only the beginning and that more businesses and organizations will join this movement. I think our county should do the same. Not only should we adopt a resolution stating that our county denounces hate groups and political violence of any stripe, our commissioners should themselves pledge to refuse to whip up their bases with divisive rhetoric. Let's get out in front of this threat and stand united to protect spirited political discourse and safe public participation in our democracy. And to Les, thank you for calling me a young woman, but you know what? An opinion page is for just that, opinion. Thank you.
Up next?
Up next is Bill Weir. Bill, please unmute, state your name and residence. You'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Chair Smith and Commissioners, Bill Weir, Damascus. At last week's commission meeting before the vote to approve the budget, the subject was brought up concerning the shortfall of funding requested by various charitable services. These included Clackamas Women's Services and Northwest Family, among others. These various entities provide public services, including aid to families of incarcerated parents, child abuse victims, and battered women, and more, in Clackamas County. The total shortfall was a hundred and thirty thousand. The reason for the shortfall, according to the county administrator and some on commission, was that, given the money to work with, choices had to be made. But this was only part of the story. Here's the rest of it. Just weeks before, this commission approved a contract to a Portland nonprofit to perform a three-year study on racial justice. This nonprofit exercised its political clout by politically demanding Commissioner Shoal's resignation earlier in the year. The county's commitment is a hundred and fifty thousand with another hundred and fifty to be gotten from local governments and businesses. A similar study was done recently for Washington County and is referred to on their website. It looks like the report we're paying for will be a template from Washington County's report with a Clackamas flair. Why are we not using our internal sources to produce a study? The money was streamlined through commission by burying it in the consent agenda without discussion by commission or public input. By coincidence, this amount is over and above the hundred and thirty thousand shortfall for local Clackamas charities. So yes, this is about priorities. For the commission and county administrator, what is important is lubricating the machine. Money and power that keep circulating between the elected officials, county bureaucracy, public employee units, and special interests that keep the status quo. Why is it that it seems there's never enough money for direct benefit to taxpayers and those in special need? Instead, we have continuous rising taxes on families, continuous requests for sheriff levies, school bonds, and shortages for necessary charities. I'm not criticizing the study group board's coming project. This is about priorities of the commission to fund the Portland study instead of meeting the immediate needs of county citizens in these troublesome times. So I'm sure the victims of abuse, needing immediate housing, counseling, and safe environment now will not be served and will not be comforted by a study that's coming in three years. Thank you.
Gary, I'd like you to comment on several of the statements made by the last caller.
Yes, several were false statements, so let me clarify. This was discussed publicly by the Commissioners, not a public hearing for the public to comment. But Commissioners, you did discuss this publicly on the Tuesday work session before it went to your consent agenda, like all items that go to your consent agenda. It is true, the funds for this study are general funds, which were budgeted, by the way. It's not additional funding. It's within the budget of the Equity and Inclusion Office. And yes, the funding cuts that were made, or reductions made to those nonprofits were also general-funded programs. As you know, your general fund is approximately one hundred and forty million dollars, and you have multiple priorities and initiatives you focus on. So in the case of this study, it's, while the total grant amount is for three hundred thousand dollars, we've already secured one hundred and sixty thousand dollars from outside jurisdictions. So the cost to the county will be one hundred and forty thousand dollars. Yes, they're general-funded programs, without a doubt. Yet, there's some misinformation shared, and I'm trying to clarify. So this is something the board talked about for the last five years. It's not nothing new. This is just progressing on that study. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary. Who's up next?
Angela Nyland is up next. Angela, please unmute, state your name and residence. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. First, I have a question from the presentation on the cooling centers. Since we're still under COVID Cootie rules, do we know what the capacities are going to be at these cooling centers? I would hate for people to get turned away because, you know, there was fifty percent inside, or, you know, I would hate for people to be turned away during this hot weather. So that would be good information to have. Which leads me to, Clackamas County needs a resolution about this passports and COVID in general. I urge the board to listen to the County Commissioners' meeting from Douglas County this week, where they passed a resolution for their county. It's very informative. It was very precise, and I encourage the board to listen to that. It's so different than anything that's been discussed in Clackamas County or Yamnville County. So I encourage the board to do that because we need this. The second question I have is, with Portland stopping to enforce valid laws by stopping minor traffic infractions, is anyone on the board looking into what the impact will be to Clackamas County? This could increase our sheriffs' work, because we do enforce the laws, so the minor traffic infractions that usually would be cited by sheriffs or police in Portland and then go to court there, could come to Clackamas County, because people do leave Portland. So it would be interesting to know what that impact could be to us, cost-wise, for our court system and the sheriffs. And finally, Commissioner Shoal meets his liaison duties reinstated. So the board, he deserves them back for the main reason. The second is, his duties were all divided among the other commissioners, which reduces their effectiveness doing other liaison duties. So if I have a second left, in regards to what happened in Clackamas, I believe there is a problem when there are threats made online to people who are either standing, waving a flag, or have legitimately reserved a spot at Clackamas Park, because, you know, those threats were there for weeks. And it wasn't just, you know, they, people reserved the spot and got out of hand. People came into that spot. And I would hope that it would be safe for anyone to rent a spot that's paid money to the county and not be attacked or interfered with when they have legitimately received a space, especially when those attack threats were put online for weeks. Anyone should be able to reserve a spot. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Who's up next?
Next up is Connie Lee. Connie, please unmute yourself. Connie, please unmute yourself, state your name and residence, and you have three minutes.
My name is Connie Lee. I live in Lake Oswego. Unfortunately, it looks like things are heating up in Oregon City with the Proud Boys and their supporters. The Proud Boys have been recognized by Southern Poverty Law as a hate group. Southern Poverty Law says this about the Proud Boys, and I quote, "Proud Boys are a hate group that espouses white supremacy, antisemitism, and misogyny. They've appeared alongside other hate groups at rallies across the country, often attempting to incite violence." Unquote. Many of us here in Clackamas County are worried that this type of hate group mentality is growing in our county. The flag waivers have been very active in Oregon City, and they want us to believe that they are not racist. But their members have been seen throwing white power hand signals. Online, they proclaim, excuse me, online, they proclaim loudly that they are not racist. But they are very much against anything related to critical race theory, which has been taught in most universities for decades. I think it would be very helpful if the Board of County Commissioners would publicly condemn all hate groups, stating that racism, antisemitism, misogyny, and all other forms of hate are not welcome in Clackamas County. In the future, we may continue to only have little skirmishes, but I'm concerned that we will end up in the spotlight on national news when somebody is badly hurt or killed due to a hate crime. My other worry is that the BIPOC community is watching all this hate, and they are worried sick about their own well-being. I want to point out again that the term worried sick is not just a turn of phrase. People actually get ill carrying around the anxiety that racism engenders. Please assure us in a public way that hate does not belong in Clackamas County. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Up next? Last up is Christine Kennedy. Christine, please unmute yourself, state your name and residence. You'll have three minutes. Christine, is your mic unmuted?
Okay. My name is Christine Kennedy. I'm a resident of Clackamas County, and I've lived in Lake Oswego for six years. Chair Smith, Commissioners, Administrator Schmidt. Our country, state, and specifically our county is dealing with many complex issues and uncertainty. We've already heard a lot about that today, and the work that you're trying to do to bring us to a better place with issues like the wildfires and our emergency response. But the reality is that this has created a tremendous amount of anxiety and distress for people. This makes people vulnerable to misinformation, and frankly, it's created trust issues. There should be no lack of awareness that people are going to have questions and be concerned and be anxious. It's a very scary time for many people, and sadly, some people are going to take this fear and use it to their benefit. The pandemic and response has been a time of suffering and death that somehow has become totally divisive and partisan. At the beginning of June, the rate of, since the beginning of June, the rate of COVID cases has leveled out, and the enthusiastic audience for vaccines has dwindled. Oddly, this coincides with the furor over this vaccine passport issue. We are fortunate, blessed, to have a reliable and safe vaccine. It is reliable and safe, and I really object to all the misinformation that is shared at these public meetings. As Chair Smith, as Chair, Ms. Smith, you still have the opportunity to encourage those who might be hesitant to get the vaccine. We need to encourage trust. We know that there are many voices out there spreading fear and misinformation. We all have worked very hard to make the vaccines convenient in Clackamas County. I acknowledge that. You've done a lot of work. We've hit our target for our county, but we know we have further to go for our state. Although we know we cannot change the minds of those who are so convinced, there are some people still that are questioning it. They need encouragement. They don't need to be discouraged actively, which is happening, especially vulnerable young women. Sadly, this virus will continue to spread among the unvaccinated. Even more concerning is this misinformation. As new variants become more common, we are seeing more cases and hospitalizations in younger people. So continuing to encourage vaccination in younger people is even more important. Thank you, Clackamas County Public Health, for all the continued efforts you have made to make vaccines convenient. We're slowly creeping toward the 70% rate, and then businesses will have the option. And yet, what's happening? I just heard a person say that somebody that was trying to have an event for people
Thank you, Christine. Your time is up. Thank you very much.
Threatened. All right. Good.
I'm going to take an opportunity to correct the last caller. I believe she lied. I allow for any First Amendment right, anybody that comes before this board and lies personally about my actions, I take great exception to. As your chair, I've done everything that I know available to me to get people vaccinated who want the vaccination. And the efforts have just been astounding in this county. I also will maintain the vaccine is a choice, and people have a right to make a choice about their health. And I believe that argument has been lost. Yes, this county has received state funding to carry out the health initiatives that we have been ordered to do under Governor Brown. We have really no choice. We will be at 70% shortly. I predict by June 30th, the mandates will be lifted, and hopefully, we can get back to some type semblance of normalcy, although I do believe our society will be forever changed, and we will have to figure out how to motivate through that. I have not discouraged people from getting the vaccine, and I do not have, believe I have put any one person in danger. Thank you very much. Gary, what's up next?
Next chair is County Administrator update. I will provide that. First, I signed two contracts on your behalf, and I'm seeking your ratification of those contracts. First was for disaster management. It was under the authority of the COVID-19 Emergency Declaration, Board Order 2020-14. I signed this contract on June 18th, 2021. It is a memorandum of agreement between Clackamas County and the Gladstone School District for COVID-19 Vaccination Clinics. There is no monetary value, except the county will pay for any expenses to return the facility to precondition, to pre-use condition. If that occurs, CARES Act funding will be spent. No general funds will be spent. This agreement lasts until terminated by either party. Next, I signed a contract also for disaster management on June 23rd, 2021. This one is under the authority of the Wildfire Debris Management Emergency Declaration, Board Order 2020-66. This is an agreement between the Oregon Department of Forestry and Clackamas County for the County Communication Infrastructure Grant Program. The county is acting as the fiscal agent for the C-800 Radio Group. The C-800 Radio Group is receiving a state grant for $186,250, and Clackamas County will simply receive the funds and then pass it on to the C-800 Group. The grant is for VHF radio equipment to be used as a backup system to C-800 radio communications during a time of disaster. There are no general funds involved. So Commissioners, I'm seeking your ratification of these two contracts I signed on your behalf.
I'll accept the motion.
I move to ratify the contracts.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Savis and approved by Commissioner Scholl. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Christina, please call the poll.
I'll do it instead of Christina.
I'm sorry.
It's on the script.
Yeah. Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Smith? Aye. Motion passes for zero.
Great. One good news item I'd like to share, Commissioners, the Animal Sheltering Alliance of Portland, a coalition of public and private animal shelters, was recently awarded a grant or a donation of pet food by the Humane Society and the pet retailer Chewy. To assist with this donation of 26 pallets of pet food, Clackamas County Dog Services was chosen to temporarily house the products while regional partners organized pickups of the food. As a member of the alliance, Clackamas County Dog Services was able to provide a portion of this cat and dog food to our local food banks. Distribution will take place within the next two weeks. So thank you to everyone involved, especially the Humane Society and Chewy for the donation, and our Dog Services team for helping facilitate that effort. That is my good news. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Gary. I appreciate that. Now it's time for Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Schrader, you're up first.
All right. Well, thank you, colleagues. It's been a long morning. I'll try and be short. I wanted to give an update that I'm on the Community Economic and Workforce Development Committee at the National Association of Counties, and we are going to be putting forth a number of resolutions that actually will speak to the needs of our nonprofits and the folks that we're trying to do about homelessness. One of them is a proposed resolution on federal support to address unsheltered homelessness. Then there's the low-income housing tax credits, that we are going to have a resolution supporting that as well. Okay. And then we're also going to have a workforce resolution to leverage the combination of the Investing in Opportunity Act and Workforce Innovation in Opportunity Act for local prosperity. It's kind of long-winded. That's a motion to put forward for our workforce folks, so we can get people back to work and we can get people trained. And then there is another one for, trying to take a look, there was another housing one, a proposed resolution on the low-income housing tax credit and a proposed resolution on the New Markets Tax Credit. So we're also addressing this issue of revenue streams at the national level as combined counties across the United States of America. The other thing I wanted to mention is I did have a meeting with the folks, with our staff, and with our workforce folks, Bridgette Daisy and her folks. And we are going to bring forward, under issues and potentially a work session, the possibility of how we're going to integrate C-2, P-2 into our procurement processes. This is something that the whole board is going to have to get a look at, where they really, we have come up with kind of a model of what that might look like. I know that Commissioner Fisher mentioned it earlier, but we don't have the framework yet in our code unless we really actually move forward with this. So I'm just letting you folks know that there'll be a work, hopefully, just an issue session, and we can introduce it. And Gary, a work session, you were at the conversation the other day.
Right. We'll start with issues, and if the board wants to pursue it, we'll have a policy session for more information.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Is that it, Commissioner Schrader? Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, good afternoon, Clackamas County. On public safety, recently, Portland police officers resigned en masse from the crowd control unit after an officer was indicted. Policing is a difficult job. Our public safety personnel need your support and encouragement. We can be proud of our professional sheriff department and our police and for a district attorney and staff who help ensure safe communities in Clackamas County. Unit morale is important. So pick up the phone or email a city police officer, a deputy sheriff, or the DEA's office, and tell them you appreciate the work they're doing to keep Clackamas County safe and secure. On public health, thank you, Deborah Cockrell, for an informative tour of the Beaver Creek Health Clinic here on the Red Soil Campus. The Beaver Creek Health Center offers a convenient all-in-one health center for individuals and families to access medical, dental, and mental health services. Their charges are on a sliding fee scale, and is eligible to the uninsured and underinsured. No one is refused care due to an inability to pay. No one in the county need go without care and support. Call 503-655-8471 to make an appointment at a Clackamas Health Center location near you. Also on public health, thank you to Deborah Mason and the Clackamas Service Center Board members, who briefed me yesterday on the beneficial and critical work their center provides for the people of the county. The service center is an inclusive, one-stop community center for individuals and families seeking food relief and resources for improved health, dignity, stability, medical and dental, and other support services. The Clackamas Service Center now offers free food delivery, which is especially helpful to our disabled members of the community. To request a box of food delivered, call 503-771-7914, or visit their website at CSOregon.org, or drop in at the center for a hot meal and other support. Also, they are looking to expand their operation into a new facility, and that will take funds. Contact Deborah Mason, the director at the center, to learn more about what you can do to help. And finally, on opioid crisis, thank you, Clackamas County Public Health Division, Philip Mason Joyner and April Huron for their briefing yesterday on the opioid crisis. We have a serious problem with opioid abuse in Clackamas County. Both prescribed drugs and illegal street drugs are contributing to the deadly problem. It affects our citizens of all ages. We must increase public awareness. Education starts with our young people. See the Clackamas County homepage. At the bottom is a briefing on deadly little pills, fentanyl overdoses rising in Clackamas County. Share it with your kids, friends, and neighbors. Be aware of the threat. It will take all of us to turn this problem around. Finally, no one should feel isolated in Clackamas County. There are people ready to help with any problem you or a loved one may have. And finally, also, if there's a constituent out there that's got a question that I have not yet responded to, please call the office at 503-655-8581, or email me at mshow@clackamas.us. And thank you, and stay cool this weekend.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Thank you. You know, it's occurred to me and a lot of other folks recently that we seem to be at a heightened state of distress of sorts, and that tension that's in the air over whatever people are passionate about is, I think, been exacerbated by the COVID crisis. It has been exacerbated by the restrictions that we've all had to endure. It's been exacerbated by the firestorm that we had, which is now perhaps upon us again. We hope not. And also the ice storm. We have endured a lot of crises, and ongoing, way before this, and currently ongoing, is the homelessness crisis. So we're all, I think, a little bit tense, and we all think we're all feeling it. Our communities are feeling it. Our employees are here, the county are feeling it. And, you know, I mentioned several times that COVID-19 is, that the war we have is really against the virus. And when I think about patriotism, and I think about times when our country's been threatened, even though this one here is not a country, or it's not an army, it's COVID-19, that if we're really truly patriots, perhaps we can find ways of working towards a solution and realize it's not one another. And I think sometimes those tensions have exhibited themselves, whether it's been here in public testimony, or it's out in the streets of Portland, or in the streets of Oregon City, wherever that may be. People are exhibiting what's on their mind, or what they feel threatened by, or what they're passionate by. And that's what our country is known for, the First Amendment right, freedom of speech. And that's what our country is known for, the First Amendment right, freedom of speech. You know, people have that right. I understand that. But here we are on the edge or the precipice perhaps of having the COVID-19 restrictions lifted. We have summer upon us. I know that a lot of people want to have, get back to life. Their, people want to enjoy their special events. People are engaged to be married or are having weddings and even those weddings are compromised and people have passed. Number of friends of mine have passed. You can't even celebrate one's passing any longer, but we're, again, we're coming around the corner, but so much has happened. I think we need to take it all in. I just ask people to cherish what we have, cherish who we are, and try to enjoy and some solace, some peace and quiet and enjoy the summer and hopefully things can calm down. I just really ask for everyone to really remain calm and take it all in and take care of your family members and your friends. I've seen so many pass in the last two years and especially in the last 16 months that I just really wonder how much of the stress and the tension that we're all feeling is really contributing to the health of people or the failing of health of others. So with that in mind, I bid you a safe, enjoyable, and tranquil weekend.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. I will close out with some great news, probably the best news that I have received and this board has received since I was sworn in in January. And that is the funding requests that have been allocated by our Oregon Legislature. And before I talk about that, I want to give a shout out to our Government Affairs, Public and Government Affairs staff, and in particular, Chris Lyons, who is our Government Affairs Manager, who has worked tirelessly at the legislature trying to convince the powers that be to listen to Clackamas County. And he's worked hard. He's worked morning, noon, and night and I'm sure he's missed some family functions because of that. In this list that's going to be revealed next Tuesday, there are 28 funding approvals and it's just astounding. And in all my life of public service, both in volunteer and elected, I have never seen anything like it. This is just the state funding. I suspect many of it was federal funds that came in to the Oregon Legislature. But I have to say our Clackamas County legislators, the county caucus has listened and they have put their dollars into very important projects in the county and I am just totally thrilled to death. Everywhere from, of course, the big ask is our courthouse will be funded with a matching 50% grant at $94.5 million. And there is also an important budget note on that, on House Bill 5006, Budget Note Number Seven. We will report back in the next short legislative session regarding the P-3 project. Now, the reason why I mention that is because the P-3 project, I believe, is the only project accepted for the build, design, build, and construction of a government building in Oregon. So it's very important that we get this right as we move forward because all eyes will be watching us and that's just wonderful. We also got $4 million for the Gateway Corridor and Martha, you'll be happy, as you know, $7.2 million for the restoration of the Willamette Falls locks and canal. And you and I are going to continue with some work on that, I suspect. Everything down the line, Malala Rural Fire Department, Estacada Fire Department, and family treatment courts, Brownfield redevelopment, City of Sandy wastewater, State Broadband Fund, Canby Fire District, Clackamas County Business Recovery Centers, Wilsonville Chamber, Fairgrounds, City of Milwaukee, North Clackamas Chamber, West Lynn, Parrott Creek, Oregon City, City of Milwaukee. I think everybody got something and I want to thank our Oregon Legislature for working so hard on this, allocating dollars to, I think, our most needy and people. And it's taking care of a lot of wonderful needs and it is up to us as the oversight is to make sure that those allocations are carried out as they were given to us. Very good news and I'm going to relish this as I go home and over the weekend. I have appointments tomorrow and tonight, but commissioners, I think just take some time to go over that list and make yourselves happy. And with that in mind, that's all I have to say. This meeting is adjourned.